I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands
Thank you. Roll call please. Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Mokel. Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Whitehead.
Present.
Vice President Cantz.
Yes.
President Piper, here. Attorney Ben Freeman.
Here.
Auditor Ed Carroll. All right, questions from the public may be directed to countycouncildist@co.dellaware.in.us. Again, that's countycouncildist@co.dellaware.in.us. Marissa, was the agenda posted? This time I'll entertain the approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Ryan.
President.
Yes.
I'd like to move to amend the agenda to add, under ordinances and resolutions, Midwest Metal Products Tax Abatement declaratory resolution.
Second.
I've got a motion to amend to include the Midwest Metal Tax Abatement from Bill, second by Eugene. Roll call on the amendment. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
And a roll call to approve the agenda. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, at this time I'll entertain the approval of the October 22nd, final 2025 budget hearing minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Ryan. Questions or comments on that? Roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
At this time I'll entertain the approval of the October 22nd council meeting minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Ryan.
I would like to make a comment, Mr. President. I did ask for a few corrections, and I believe that they'll be added into the final version that we signed.
Okay.
Very small details, but.
Okay. All corrections. All right, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the transport appropriation agenda. All right, starting off in county general. 145 jail. 106, 101 sergeant, negative $1,675.18. 110, 101 correctional officer, negative $1,347.1. 111, 101 correctional officer, negative $10,804.30. 113, 101 correctional officer, negative $748.29. 115, 101 correctional officer, negative $2,754.16. 119, 101 correctional officer, negative $499.98. 121, 101 correctional officer, negative $149.63. 126, 101 correctional officer, negative $2,005.66. 130, 101 correctional officer, negative $10,478.72. 131, 101 correctional officer, negative $2,745.12. 132, 101 correctional officer, negative $649.63. 133, 101 corporal, negative $1,434.63. 138, 101 correctional officer, negative $499.98. 139, 101 corporal, negative $1,505.72. 140, 101 correctional officer, negative $499.98. 141, 101 correctional officer, negative $7,048.33. 142, 101 correctional officer, negative $3,448.72. 147, 101 correctional officer, negative $1,820.1. 149, 101 correctional officer, negative $454.80. 151, 101 corporal, negative $281.32. 152, 101 corporal, negative $288.94. 114, 101 correctional officer, positive $3,231.89. 125, 101 correctional officer, positive $7,272.26. 135, 101 correctional officer, positive 101. 155, 101 correctional officer, positive $7,360.18. 197, 126 overtime, positive $21,000. 196, 119 holiday, positive $37,674.78. 101, 110 clothing allowance, negative $25,500 for total transfers of zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Do you have any questions or comments on this? I know it was discussed if I have to should be enough to get us through. Maybe.
You should better be. I don't have any more options.
Questions for the record, please. So I get taking the different variable amounts out of the positions that weren't filled. Explain, please, why we're adding the high dollar amounts into positions like correctional officer, $7,000, can you walk me through that, please?
There were two people getting paid out of the same line for a period. And rather than them have to go back in, reverse pull, reverse pull, to correct that issue, I told them that I would fix it here by pulling the excess funds from the line that wasn't getting paid and putting it over to the line where someone was getting, where two people were getting paid out of.
So hold me understand this.
But it has been fixed then.
So you're saying two people were being paid out of the same line for how long? Because we're almost at the end of the year.
Right, we found it earlier on, and I'm just now fixing it.
So this was a mistake that was caught at the beginning of the year?
No, not at the beginning of the year. It was caught about August, September. I don't do payroll. All I do is make sure lines number zero. And as you know, twice a year, I will come in and figure how many pays I have left, how much does this person need on line, and that's when I caught that two people were being paid out.
I was trying to figure out how would something like that would go for so long without, because I mean, they're all uniformed, pretty much. I mean, you look down the spreadsheet, they almost all the numbers looked identical. It appears that that one would jump off the page and say, hey, there's a problem here before August.
But again, I honestly, I only look.
I'm not telling the messenger here, I know you're the messenger.
I know, I only look to make sure twice a year that we're getting enough on the overtime, if there's a bunch of extra, I move it around, obviously, but it's on me that I didn't catch it sooner. It was just in my regular routine of having to look for overtime.
So that was just a part of it, but the rest of all this is just the typical end of year, gather up all your pennies, put them into the overtime and holiday fund, correct?
And if we don't use it, it comes back to you guys in the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right. 129 sheriff. 221 operating supplies fuel, negative $10,000. 363 repair and maintenance vehicle, positive $10,000 for a total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. This is just to make up some repairs to your old transport van, not the new one we just approved for you. Do you have any further questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
148 planning commission. 107, 101 principal planner, negative $8,000. 535 machinery, positive $3,995. 536 equipment, positive $4,005 for total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. We had enough of paperwork.
Yes, good morning, counsel. Kylene Spockhammer from the planning commission. So we just passed out, we have turned these in previously, but we just passed out some quotes again. We're just requesting to transfer a portion of our 2024 unused salary funds to purchase some much needed office equipment. We're asking to transfer $8,000 from salary line 107 into the machinery and equipment lines. We do have quotes for all the items that we want to purchase.
You had mentioned, Kelly, that in budget, you had given back money and new, and mentioned that you were going to try to hold back something for these things, right?
Yeah, we talked about this previously at budget, but we still do have a give back. We had turned in our original estimated give back at $28,500. After we went through and did each payroll individually, we still have a give back of And that is if we do get this $8,000 to keep for office equipment.
That's after the $8,000 deduction?
Yes.
Well, I can't speak for anyone else, but for me personally, this right here is what I've been asking every single person who comes to that podium and asks for money from the council to provide. Far too often, people come up to that podium and just throw a number out on the basis of, trust me, this is the number, and we're just expected to, I guess, just take their word for it. And I've asked for department heads to provide invoices such as this, such as you have provided here, and you'll never get a no vote from me when you provide an invoice like this. So I want to commend you and thank you for providing that. This is an easy vote for me. Thank you.
Do you have anything else? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 138 courts, 106, 101 assistant court reporter, negative $6,500. 211 office supplies, positive $1,500. 312, 310 professional services, positive $5,000, total transfer for zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Do we have any questions on this?
I do.
Okay.
Could you give me some details of how we had $6,500 pulled from the assistant court reporter? And then follow up to that, what are the professional services for $5,000?
Sure, Emily Anderson Court Administrator. We have assistant court reporter position that was not filled throughout the year. I have more salary line items that I'm going to be giving back at the end of the year. And remember, I told you that earlier during budget, that I was keeping it until end of year, because I wasn't sure if I was going to need it for jury trials and other things. Well, this is part of things we need. Part of that being, we have a new judicial officer that's going to need a judicial robe, which is about $600, and then letterhead business cards and things like that. So that's $1,500 of that, $6,500 for office supplies. And then $5,000 is for guardian ad litem invoices for attorneys that we are court ordered to provide. For people that can't afford a guardian ad litem, it's people that are indigent, but they need guardian ad litem appointed, and we have an attorney that does that at reduced rate. That's the $5,000 professional services.
Okay, thank you. Did you say $600 for a judicial robe?
And it's, it won't be here till February.
Versace, right?
Yeah, of course, only the best.
Wow, okay, thank you for that.
Yep.
Do we have anything else? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, thank you. 123 Title 40 court. 171 FICA, negative $620. 172 PERF, negative $185. 173 health insurance, positive $945. 174 life insurance, negative $15. 175 disability insurance, positive $355. 311 contractual services, negative $380 for total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. We had a few of these that we'll see coming through where insurance rates were off, so doing some adjusting to correct that. Do we have any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. 126 auditor. 198, 101 part-time overtime, negative $2,400. 112, 101 claims deputy, positive $2,400, total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Do we have any questions on this one?
I do.
Okay.
Somebody explain the claims deputy, $2,400 in November.
Tanya Dunsmore, chief deputy auditor. This is to replace the chief deputy, or the chief deputy, my bad, the claims deputy that left in October, and I didn't want to go 30 days without a claims deputy. So we got someone in there, and this is the money to carry it through through the end of the year.
I didn't realize we had a part-time overtime line item.
Well, that's how it sits this year, in the new year, separated out.
I mean, with all due respect, is that the new protocol where everybody?
No, it's not, but I did have to make an executive call on that in order for the better of the county.
I know, but there's a policy and protocol in place. You can't just hire people and pay them, and then come to us after the fact and say, hey, I need the money. That's not the way it works.
When we're talking $2,400.
Doesn't matter. You can schedule, ask the president, schedule a special hearing, there's protocols in place. Nobody has the authority to go on their own, hire employees, and pay them without the council approval. You don't get to do it, and neither does no one else. This is completely against protocol, and I'm going to vote against it just for that fact.
Okay.
This is not the way we do stuff. And everybody sitting up here knows it.
Do we have any other additional comments or questions on that?
How does that relate to our backfilling? Is this not backfilling?
He's saying that they, it was backfilled. The money wasn't in that line item. They backfilled it prior to approval, and they're going to move the money now into that line item. Person's already been hired, I assume.
Correct.
Yeah.
So typically, feel like if someone has benefits, right, we have to wait and pay that out, and then we can hire somebody. Otherwise, we have to do what we're doing here, which is either transfer new money in or appropriate new money. Right? That's why I suggested before when we were doing the budget that we have a procedure in place to pay out employees the second they leave, so we don't have to go around, do workarounds like this that are outside the protocol of how we normally do things.
So we were paying a former employee, then the new employee at the same time, and that's...
We paid out the former employee, and that former employer employee had never called in a date and is alive. So therefore, he had some days to be paid out, and I didn't feel it was in any of our best interests to go 30 days without a claims deputy.
I don't disagree with that at all. What I'm saying is there's protocols in place, and the second we start letting our guard down and letting people just make decisions based off of what they think is best, that's when we get ourselves in a world of trouble. What if the council today decided we didn't want to transfer that money? Then what would you do?
Well, I would hope that everyone would see the need for what it is and move the money.
It's not about need, this is clear as day.
It is about need.
This is asking for forgiveness rather than permission, is what this is.
It is about need. It's not just understanding that.
It's a role too, when people have passed unacceptably, so.
So that's what we're doing now?
No, I'm just acknowledging that we've done it.
And I'm with Ryan, we theoretically should be addressing what the what the long-term issue is, and in the case of the auditors' office, who's, you know, been under the gun, so to speak, for several months and has had turnover like this, there is not really a mechanism for them to do what was done here, but, I mean, I agree with Ryan also that we're altering for the sake of altering based on that. So, I mean, we don't really have a good Plan B, right, is what you're saying?
Well, we've done it in the past. We've had, I think Fred, or I could be wrong on which department head it was, but we've had similar situations where, hey, I cannot wait for this, I need an employee now, and either A, they would get, they would kind of speak to us and get our feeling if we would be okay with approving it in the next month's meeting, or B, they would call a special meeting. We've done special meetings for this very same exact scenario. We have, everyone knows we have, and because that's the protocol, right? Protocols is what, what we're supposed to be doing things by. We can't, the second we start deviating out of the protocols and making exceptions for whatever it is that we justify in our own minds, that's when, I mean, everything just goes to hell. I mean, there's protocols for a reason. I don't want to have to come to a special meeting and miss a day of work, I totally get it. I wish we had a different process in place, but what we absolutely cannot normalize is people just making decisions with taxpayer money before the fiscal body gives authorization to do so. We cannot do that, period. I don't care if it's $2,400, $24,000, or $24. It can't happen, it cannot be normalized.
I agree with Ryan, I, you know, the institute, the backfilling process that we did, the concern expressed was, are we going to lose control over funding of personnel? I will vote for this one, I will not vote for any similar situations in the future. We have to adhere to the process that was intended.
So, just to be clear, if this situation comes about for any department head, where they feel that they cannot go without that employee, like that position, I should say, the Plan B protocol is to come to council, A, outside of a meeting, A, in a meeting, A, at a finance meeting, what is going to be the procedure?
I mean, you communicate with our council president all the time. I mean, it's nothing to say, hey, I've got a situation here, do an email or a phone call, where this is what we have. The first thing I would suggest is what every other business in the county does, is that would cross-train your employees, so if somebody drops out in the three weeks, four weeks before we have another council meeting, somebody can fill that role.
And I did do that, Ryan. I did do that, Ryan. And I also spoke with Ms. Piper after the last council meeting. Do you remember that?
No.
I did, I came up to you after the council meeting. I told you what I would be bringing to the table at the next council meeting. I got, well, I guess I don't really remember. We discussed a few things.
Right.
But that was about hiring them before getting our blessings. I know we've had other people come before us and ask us for their blessing before they did it. I think maybe we've done that for Fred, maybe even Brad, I can't recall.
I feel like you tapped into a couple of times.
But it's been in a publicly done in front of all of us. I guess I don't recall that part of the conversation, about actually making the hire. And obviously, we need someone in this role, it's an important role, it's imperative. And I apologize, I don't recall that part of that conversation, but I think that... Apologize. You know, we want to make sure that...
The policy is written, when we change the backfilling process, it's written down how it works. And it says in there exactly that you don't do this.
That's my point.
I don't have it in front of me, I wish I did, but we wrote it down, we said this is how we're going to do it.
If I could just make one more statement, one more point for this office or any other office that feels, if you've got any position in your office that if life happens and that employee for some reason can't be there for three weeks, and you can't make it, then you got bigger problems. Figure it out, cross-train your people. Nobody is that important to where their absence for three weeks brings the whole ship down. It just doesn't work that way. Get your people cross-trained, get people who can fill in the gap and help each other cross the finish line for three weeks until we have our next council meeting. And this shouldn't happen.
This would have been more than three weeks, just to let you know. How? It would have been over 30 days if I counted correctly with his payout.
We just had a meeting.
But I did cross-train, as you know, we have a lot of new employees, so I did cross-train another employee. There is another employee who helps train and back up in those positions as well. But considering all with the claims area, I did not feel that we needed to wait a minute on getting someone in there, and the person who we have in there has done accounts payable all her life.
But with all due respect, Tanya.
So I felt like it was a good decision to make when I had the opportunity to grab her, and I did so against protocol, obviously.
But with all due respect.
But I would like to know.
You don't have that authority to do that, with all due respect. And I'm not trying to come down on you and beat you up because you're the person sitting in the chair, but when we're talking... when, when we're talking about these types of situations, right, and I've, I've sit up here and I've heard for the last year, mistake after mistake after mistake, and I'm tired of hearing, we have new people, everybody's new, everybody's in new positions. Listen, if you guys are gonna rearrange the entire office and put everybody in different positions all at once, there's gonna be problems that come with that.
That's correct.
But it's not a blank check for the whole year to excuse any mistakes or excuse poor decisions because well, we got all new people, or well, you know, uh, everybody's new in roles. That's not what this is for.
I guess I felt like this decision was actually a positive to some of the problems.
I can respect that by just saying, but you don't have authority to do it. That's what I'm trying to get you to see. I understand you probably, it probably may have been a, a good decision, but you don't have the authority to do it. We have the authority.
This is the position that pays claims, credit card bills, et cetera.
I, I would like to comment on that.
Sure.
A department head has the authority to hire and fire.
That's before the council approves the money.
Has the authority to approve or deny the money. So let's be clear on the two different things.
Well, I'm gonna deny this money and I'll show you real quick. You don't have approval or authority to hire anyone before we approve the funding for it. And I encourage everyone of you to vote with me. But we'll see who has the authority here in just a few minutes.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I would agree with Councilman Hughes on his assessment of this. I'd also like to call for the question.
Roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Absolutely not.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper. Yes. Thank you, counsel.
One thirty-three corner, three eleven contractual services, negative fifty-six thousand dollars. Two twenty operating supplies, positive fifty-six thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Um, this is basically purchasing items that were on their budget for next year that they removed from their request and are able to purchase this year. Yes, Mr. Coroner, you're up. Okay.
I have a question for this.
Gavin Green, Delaware County Corner.
Yes, Gavin.
So, President Piper said that, I understand what you want to purchase with it. Help me understand the fifty-six thousand dollars that was freed up to make this purchase.
So the autopsies, so it's really hard to budget for autopsies. We don't know exactly how many are going to happen. So what we did was, just that by the end of the year, we forecasted out. We had estimated, uh, I I think that we had freeing up about sixty thousand dollars. And so we're not doing as many autopsies as were budgeted what we had in place. And so with reducing our budget for next year, what we wanted to do is, if we had the money allocated for this year to purchase items, so it didn't we could give, we don't have to ask any more money for next year.
With all due respect, Gavin, I'm almost positive, and someone correct me if I'm misremembering this. I'm almost positive that someone from the Coroner's Office stood up at that podium earlier in the year and asked us to appropriate more money for autopsies this year. So it wasn't that, it wasn't budgeted right, that there was a request for more money that we appropriate, because I remember, I think, I'll, I'll even describe the, the exact conversation. There was a conversation about someone being shot and I asked the question, why would someone getting a gunshot have to have an autopsy?
Yes.
And the response was, you know, we have to do autopsies for all these different reasons. So I'm almost positive we gave more money for autopsies.
No, you did not.
So what was that conversation about?
Uh, we were just asking, I think the, the conversation was just how much it costs and why we budget the way that we do. And I think the conversation was that we had to bring back the body from Methodist and I was working with Delaware County EMS. And I said, I would have to ask for more money if we started transporting our bodies and started, we'd have to have more people and more part-time. But no, we have not. We have not asked for any additional appropriations for money for autopsies in the two years that I've been here.
Okay. And then real quick, did you, did you um educate me on how much is a typical autopsy?
Around sixteen hundred dollars. We're currently at a hundred and eighty right now. We're projected to do about two hundred.
Okay. And then you guys are, so obviously you're less than what you did last year in autopsies.
That is correct.
If I'm reading this right, you transferred out about ninety-one thousand dollars last year, twenty-twenty-three.
Correct.
Out of autopsies.
Correct. And we've reduced the amount that we've requested in autopsies every year to try to help close that gap, so we're not having to move around more. So we have reduced it. The line item for contractual services back in the day from, from our, from ECPI, the company that we do our autopsies from, we've reduced that amount. Because during the previous administration, we were doing, I think it was three hundred and ten thousand dollars that the autopsies were. And now every year from COVID and from the opioid epidemic, it has slowly gone down every single year. That doesn't mean that it might not spike up, that we would have to come back. But, and that's the conversation we're talking about, that if it's a, if it's an overdose, why do we have to? Because the conversation then was, well, maybe that's a prosecutor's office problem, that the prosecutor's office is asking for additional money. And I said, you know what? I, I have too good a relationship with the prosecutor's office to, to fight over that. So that's what that conversation was.
Yeah, because we were saying that it's not always your call. The prosecutor can request it.
Correct. Yes. And by, and by state law, he, I'm, I'm the only person that can authorize one, but he can order me to have one. And I'm not gonna get to that. I'm not gonna get that, no.
Well, thanks for explaining that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Gavin does a good job of like providing us updates. We usually get an email from him periodically that shows us the different trends. So he's doing pretty good forecasting on, on what's going to happen based on trends throughout the year. So I appreciate that.
What else do you pay out of contractual services?
Uh, that will be all of our uh, drug tests, x-rays, um, any additional testing that the pathologist wants to do. Our normal, if she has additional slides or additional test, it might be an extra five or six hundred dollars and it, we're at the will of her to try to figure out, to determine the cause and manner.
I was just getting curious. The items we're wanting to purchase, are they, are they wants or are they needs?
They're needs that, uh, we've been backfilling stuff for the last two years of supplies. And so every year we try to get additional equipment for all of our part-timers, for the full-timers, to try to get equipment. Um, I just made the, the statement at the appropriations on Thursday. We had an industrial accident at Progress Rail that when we walked in, we did have our steel-toed OSHA-approved boots that we purchased last year. But then they also said you need OSHA-approved helmets, ear protection and eye protection. And so we had to, she ran and went out, she was the one that went out there with the fire department and they had to put on stuff. So we've uh, are getting the gear to have all of that because.
They should have provided you that.
They, they did, but it's one of those.
Can't get off the green zone without it, but they, I mean, that's nothing.
Right.
Hard ass. The boots I get.
Yeah.
With the hard hats and eyeglasses. I mean, they have that stuff at a thousands.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll play devil's advocate that when Ryan was asking about financing, whether or not uh, people were moving money around to just spend it to, for the sake of spending it. This is the only one that raised a red flag because of the amount, number one. Um, but you know, you mentioned body bags and other things that are, that are being done. Um, real quick, this isn't relevant directly to this, but you had a scare with the morgue component. That's all resolved, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
As of now. Yes.
Nothing changes relative to the morgue.
No, it's not.
As it stands today.
Correct. And, and real quick, just to touch off what Matt said, um, I want to give you an opportunity because you do, do a good job of explaining because at first glance, you know, I've, I've, I've said in the past, sometimes people, um, they will inflate their numbers at budget time and then towards the end of the year, they will withdraw money from those areas and then use those, those dollars for wish list items. On one hand, we want to weigh, um, yes, use your own money to, so it's not an additional appropriation with it's, it's not a crime to allow some of this money, unspent money to return to the, the general fund to get us in a good position starting for next year. So um, I wanted to give you an opportunity to explain that, uh, that basically make sure this wasn't one of those situations and I appreciate you doing so.
Yeah, I, I, and quite frankly, I would have asked probably for sixty-five and then the office manager looked at me and said, you need to calm down. And so we worked on our numbers more and got that down. So I'm not saying that we're, we might not even give more back as well too, so.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. And then no further questions. Roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
One thirty-nine, public defender. One seventy-one FICA, negative five thousand dollars. Thirteen attorney fees, positive five thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Questions on this one?
Well, this is part of what's gonna be.
How, how do we have five thousand from FICA to give for attorney fees?
You wanna explain it? This is the beginning of multiple uh, public defender things that are sitting on the table here.
Yeah, um, all I had money left over from FICA was that the, as before, I had some FICA and perf calculation issues uh, for the budget for twenty-four. And that is just what, that's left over from that.
This still relates to the, your appropriation requests and other things too, right?
Yeah. The attorney, I'm sorry, Michelle Harvey, Public Defender's Office. Um, this is, I'm trying to put a drop in the bucket of what I'm asking for in my appropriation for attorney fees, trying to show a good faith effort that anywhere I could find money to put toward those attorney fees, I did. But that's about the only place I could find it. So I wanted to transfer that into the attorney fees to help with my appropriations requests that are forthcoming.
Further questions or comments?
Thank you.
Sure. Hearing that, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper. Yes.
Thank you. Did you want to move ahead to my supplemental?
I will just keep going in order. We'll come back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. One twenty-five clerk. Two eleven office supplies, negative one thousand five hundred. Five thirty-six equipment, positive one thousand five hundred, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. We had an unexpected death of a computer that needs replaced, right? So, do you have any further questions?
Um, you'd be okay on your office supplies rest of the year?
Oh, yeah. We got one. My bike will have some give back, right?
Roll call please.
Was just unplanned.
If John can do that.
All right, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Rick, just wanted to say, good job on the election. Congratulations on that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Great staff. I tell you what, the people really come to you. You stop and think about how many people we pluck from the community and train them for like two hours, then expect them to work sixteen hours, forty-five thousand votes and not make a mistake. That's pretty amazing. They did a great job.
Good job to everyone.
One twenty-four, communication. One thirty-six, educational incentive, positive one thousand dollars. Two eleven office supplies, positive four thousand dollars. Three fifty-eight, utility services phone, negative fifteen thousand dollars. Three sixty-four, three sixty-two, repairs or maintenance software, positive ten thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. We have all kinds of little things. Yeah, just, we'll let you share your comments on this one.
So the educational incentive is, it's always the best guess in the budget. We have more people with degrees, so that's why we don't have enough money in it. Um, several of the other lines that are listed, I recently learned were in the red, did not know it. So this is to shore those lines up.
You have any questions, Fred?
Did we ever get answers as to why they were in the red?
Got several answers why. Um, I had payroll lines that were being paid out to two people and um, that apparently was some kind of a software glitch. Some of the other things were charged to places where they weren't supposed to, and hopefully they'll get reversed and.
So is the issue fixed?
I hope so.
So, this is just to correct a mistake then? This isn't necessarily because you don't necessarily need the, the utility services phone? So I understand that, right?
Services, I was able to pull from there because we didn't sign the AT&amp;T contract until later in the year, so there's extra money in there.
So it's a fifteen thousand dollar mistake? So if you didn't have that money, we'd have to find fifteen thousand?
Not necessarily. There was stuff charged to this, to this account that was supposed to go to the twelve twenty-two account. It was clear on the claim. That's where it was supposed to go. It didn't go there. It got charged against office supplies. Like I said, the educational incentive is not a bad thing. It means we have more people with degrees. Um, I'm not gonna stand here. I, I I have some frustrations and I, I'm just gonna leave it at that, but, but there were several issues um, with lines in my department. I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, so.
I mean, we're not, no, we're not trying to nitpick anybody. Everybody makes mistakes, all right? Mistakes happen. Um, I guess my concern is, the second person that's mentioned about the, being pulled from two different lines, my concern is that it's this far in the year that we're catching this stuff. I mean, if this stuff's happening. Um, and again, I'm not chilling.
They paid the same person out of the same payroll, they paid two people out of the same payroll line for five payrolls, was what I was told. And it was never caught, so.
It's astonishing to me. And, and, and in my opinion, completely unacceptable. And this has got to get fixed. This, this is, this is not an efficient way of governing. It's just not. I mean, good lord, everybody can tiptoe around it and not want to address the issues for what it is, but this cannot continue. And everybody just look away like it's not happening, because it's happening. And sooner or later, it's gonna burn us. Somebody's gotta get it figured out. Or maybe multiple people gotta get it figured out, but um, this is just unacceptable.
Matt and I met with the auditor's office after finance on Thursday, trying to get a good idea of some of somebody's concerns. And I, I want to make sure I understand this process correctly, but the departments fill out a file. And then gets sent to your office. We pull it in and that's how things get paid. So if something gets keyed in wrong, it can get paid wrong.
Correct.
That wasn't the case with this pro, with this though.
But, but that's one of the things that we're.
My stuff was filled out.
So I just want to make sure we're, we're clear on some of that too. Um.
We, we went back and looked at our claims. My stuff was filled out right.
Yeah. Now, are you able to pull, I, payroll's not a claim.
I'm not talking about payroll. I'm talking about.
About payroll.
Yeah, but we, again, we went back and looked at, at VIP to address Tanya's comment. We, I went back and looked at VIP and we had charged the correct payroll line for the person and it somehow got charged to somebody else. So I, I don't know how.
And then Ryan had a question about how things can go unnoticed. Do you, department heads, do you have a portal or anything where you can see your files and look at those daily, weekly? You have access to that?
We have access, we have access to VIP. The issue, the issue is this, and, and, and again, I'm, I'm pretty frustrated about this. I think you all know that. You all got an email, so. Um, the, the, the issue is, it shouldn't be on the department head to figure out that he's nine thousand dollars in the hole. Right? Without some kind of a mechanism in place from the, from the auditor's office or, or whoever to give a heads up. I, I know in years past, if I went two dollars over in my office supply line, I'd have been notified immediately. I'm almost three thousand dollars in the red because of accounting errors that were charged to the wrong account. At some point, there needs to be a red flag that comes up, because if I hadn't printed my current up-to-date budget to figure out where I was with stuff, I never would have found any of this. At some point, there needs to be a red flag that comes up, because if I hadn't printed my current up-to-date budget to figure out where I was with stuff, I never would have found any of this. And, and that's where my frustration lies.
So like, but, but, nah. I think that's fair, to a degree. Still your budget, so while maintenance of the budget happens in the auditor's office, department heads and other elected officials maintain, should be maintaining some semblance of control over their money and noticing things on a regular basis potentially. Should it be up to these auditor's offices to do it? Maybe that's the way it was, I'm, I'm not sure it wasn't here, but ultimately, um, it's a two-way street. You know, department heads have to submit, auditor's office has to fix or, or, you know, process and, and, and pay, um. I've had, as Jessica mentioned, we've had, I've had multiple conversations now with Carol on this topic, and Tanya was part of one of those, and there's m- multiple potential issues at play, I'm not here every day, I don't know, so I'm not gonna pretend to speak to them, but we as collectively, as a group, department heads, auditor's office, whomever's involved in anything like this, we, we gotta do a better job of communication. We've got to be better equipped to speak up when there are challenges, make, when mistakes are made, and this is on all sides, admit to those things and fix them. Um, the kind of tendencies I feel like I've experienced here are back and forth of he said, she said, accusatory here, you know, that's not the way it worked over here scenario. Pick up the phone, everybody needs to be able to communicate and make sure that these things are being dealt with at the time that they're happening. If there are more controls in place, then we collectively should sit down as a group and have discussions. If there's a problem that people think isn't being fixed, set a meeting, get, get, get it, I mean, I'm not one for meetings, believe me, but when things are not being resolved, we need communication improvements on all sides, this goes for, for everybody, so. It's, it's been challenging to try to understand the dynamic, I know that there's been a lot of things thrown out there. Um, head's office has, has had challenges, and I think he admits, wholly admits to that. He's talked about his communication and trying to improve that, I reiterated to him that he need, we need to be reiterating things that, that he is, changes that he's making, so we can continue to improve any processes that currently exist. Uh, he's obviously trying to get us into the twenty-first century from a technology standpoint. I'm all for that, it has been a learning curve, no two ways about that, between staffing issues and other problems, so. You know, trying to give people the benefit of the doubt is understandable, we need to continue to communicate more effectively so that things can get resolved in a timely manner, if at all possible.
To, to a couple of your points though, Matt, and, and, again, I think everybody knows I'm pretty blunt, but, um, to, to a couple of your points, if I budget a, X amount of dollars for a salary line, I shouldn't worry that it's in the red at this point in the year, and that's not something I should have to babysit. I, I, I disagree with you, okay? The second thing is, and everybody in this room can say this because they were countywide emails. We've been told we're not supposed to call the auditor office, we're spo, we're not supposed to go down and see them, we're supposed to do everything by email, and then imagine our frustration when sometimes emails don't get returned. Like, I, I'm all for communication, you're gonna hear me get up and talk about this encumbrance policy in a little bit, because that was never communicated. The, the first time as a department head that I learned we were gonna talk about encumbrance stuff was at the last council meeting when the ordinance was introduced, had no input on how department heads do business or anything else, it literally got thrown at us at a council meeting without any input from any department head that was here. And I think that's wrong, and I think that's a communication problem, but it's something that continues all the time.
Madam President?
Yeah.
We have gotten off topic, I have a question though.
Go ahead.
The issues that led to these problems, have they been corrected?
I don't know, because it's not, it's not, that would be Tanya, it's not, it's not my issue.
Okay, I believe Whitney got back with Heidi on the office supply issue that was at hand. And, so that is in the process, and Kita came back to work on Monday, and I discussed with her if she had certain corrections to make as far as moving on lines, and she said, yes, she does. I believe you are also working on the payroll issue. Is aware of it and working on that, so that is being addressed as well. I believe you and I had a conversation after the budget meeting on October fourteen, and you brought up the same thing about the email that went out back before I was here, of email only and no communication. And I personally told you right then and there that you can call. And now I was the chief deputy now, and you could call Ed, you could call me, you have Ed's cell, you have my cell, and you have both our office phone numbers. So, for you to resort back, sorry, to things in the past that have changed, I think for the better, frustrates me, especially when you and I had a one-on-one.
We did, but, I've tried calling you several times and he doesn't answer the phone, so I, I, I don't know what, I don't know what to tell you.
My phone does not have a missed call for me.
I didn't say you, I said Ed.
If, if I could real fast, you, I think maybe you guys should have a one-on-one conversation about that and get that sorted out, um. Just quickly to touch base, Jessica said something a minute ago about, I'm concerned about waiting to, for things to be caught late in the year. I'm sure there are things throughout the year that people catch, and you know, we have good employees and we commend them, it's a thankless job, no one's patting them on the back when they catch it. They only hear people frustrated when they don't catch it, I totally get that, right, but we're all adults, we all have to be accountable for, for, um, you know, ourselves and our actions. I think a lot of what is, um, transpiring could be, uh, eliminated with a little bit more clear lines of communication and a little bit of self-accountability and saying, instead of looking for what other people are doing of, what, what, what am I doing and what can I do? And, yes, it is a concern when we're not finding these incidents until, you know, late in the year, but I'm just as concerned about the things that we are finding throughout the year that continue to be on repeat, the same mistake. I watched a commissioners meeting just a couple days ago, when the sheriff got up there and spoke about credit cards being shut off once again. I know that's happened multiple times this year, these are, these are not efficient ways to govern, and I know it's gotta be embarrassing for whoever's at that counter trying to make that purchase when their game credit card don't work, so it's not just what we're not catching, it's what we are catching and not fixing.
So on that question, has the corrective action been taken on the payroll problem? Or any? Okay, but there are others too, I think. We just heard.
I don't know, yeah, uh, mm-hmm.
Okay, it's been fixed, so.
Yeah, um. I think I told everyone at the finance meeting that she would be back on Monday and I would get with her before I wanted everybody calling and bombarding her, I mean, that's only respectful towards her for coming back to work after, and everybody's been emailing and calling the week that she was off. So, uh, one of the first questions I asked her is, do you have some on your desk that still need done? The answer is yes. So, she has been very good at knowing how to fix those, and when she doesn't know how to fix those, she looks into it any deeper, even deeper. And I think any department head that we've worked closely with that does call us or even come in, you know, they'll come in. Um, I know I have went above and beyond to try to fix a problem, help out, help understand, um, anything I can do to look into it and help anyone of you.
Relative to the.
They all know that.
Relative to the credit card issues, uh, tho- those are, those are claims, they're considered claims, right? So, is the delays and things of that nature that people are experiencing, just backlog, basically?
Well. I did not hear from you guys on that, so was it a regular credit card or was that a WEX? I have no idea, because the claims are being paid, um, we don't.
So that's a challenge you guys still have to work out.
We do not issue the credit cards or the credit limits for the credit card. We do the payments and we do the overall balance for the county as a whole, or limit, I should say.
Okay, work in progress then.
Alright, I think we're, we're gonna go back and discuss credit card issue, do we have any further questions on their actual?
I would like to say those are paid as a whole, everybody has the same due date, which makes it nice and easy, and they're due by the tenth, and they're all paid at one time.
Alright, roll call please.
We're all, okay, I got, I got someone.
Roll call please. Uh, sorry, spacing out. Uh, Mister Flanagan. Mister Hughes.
Yes.
Mister Cant.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Mister Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. One fifty-three commissioners. One ninety-eight, one-on-one, part-time, negative ten thousand dollars. One seventy-five disability insurance, positive twenty thousand dollars. One seventy-four life insurance, positive one thousand nine hundred dollars. Three eleven contractual services, negative one thousand nine hundred dollars. Three forty-two workers' comp, negative two thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
I think you meant to say twelve thousand, not twenty thousand, hurt. Okay.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene.
So this was a.
Adjusting assurances.
Disability and life insurance change. So just to be clear on this, there was a issue within, it's a system steal, it's a, how they calculate insurance claim or insurance numbers, that wasn't updated and affected, uh, many people, okay. It has been since corrected, yes.
So, so they made a calculation there?
I think it was internally, we did not update that, the HR was, did not update that. It must have been a delay, some, did it come up twice a year or something? Go ahead, Marissa.
Okay, first written house benefits deputy. So, the system that we use is called steel, HR puts in all the information, and then I pull that information to calculate how much short-term and long-term disability needs to be pulled out from different types of funds. So, the beginning of this year, I realized that some of the salaries were incorrect in steel, which therefore messes up with the long-term and short-term amounts. So we called down, or up to HR, they fixed all the salaries, and then I increased everything in short-term and long-term. I think our bill went from like thirteen to nineteen thousand dollars, for the last one, for the short.
So, even, even with.
So the salaries were the actual issue, okay.
Even with all the employees' positions that went unfilled, so that money that was appropriated for them wasn't spent. Even taking that money in account, who's still this far, negative? What a November.
I want the number to remember.
Do you have any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Mister Flanagan. Mister Hughes.
Yes.
Mister Cant.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Mister Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Moving out of county general. Eleven seventy prosecutor lit. One eighteen, one-on-one receptionist, negative eleven thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. One ninety-eight, one-on-one, part-time, positive eleven thousand, twenty-six dollars, eighty-nine cents, total transfers zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. This is an employee who's been on medical, just wanting to move that salary over to part-time to get some additional help, right?
Correct. Lisa Carr from the prosecutor's office. Um, what, what we will have out of this, when I made the transfer, I took the rest of that line for the year. But it will only be two weeks of part-time salary, um, that will go towards this, and then the rest will come back to county gen, general.
Alright, any additional questions?
May I make a comment there?
Absolutely.
Will we go back to county general or go back into the lit?
I'm sorry, it will go back to lit.
Alright, thank you.
I apologize, yes.
Good point.
Sorry. Uh, roll call please. Mister Flanagan. Mister Hughes.
Yes.
Mister Cant.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Mister Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Eleven seventy lit jail. One oh three, one oh one correctional officer, negative six thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. One oh four, one oh one correctional officer, negative one thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and ninety-six cents. One oh five, one oh one correctional officer, positive three thousand, thirty dollars and four cents. One oh six, one oh one correctional officer, negative four thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and twenty-nine cents. One oh seven, one oh one correctional officer, negative seven thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. One oh eight, one oh one correctional officer, negative one thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. One oh nine, one oh one correctional officer, negative one hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. One eleven, one oh one correctional officer, negative four hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. One twelve, one oh one correctional officer, negative four thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. One thirteen, one oh one correctional officer, negative eight hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. One fourteen, one oh one correctional officer, negative seven thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-one cents. One fifteen, one oh one correctional officer, negative four hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. One ninety-seven, one twenty-six overtime, positive thirty-five thousand dollars. One night, uh, one ninety-nine, one nineteen holiday, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-four and sixty-seven, sixty-five cents. One seventy-three health insurance, negative twenty thousand dollars. One seventy-seven, one seventy-five disability insurance, negative one thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. One seventy-five disability insurance, positive one thousand, five hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. One oh one, one ten clothing allowance, negative twelve thousand dollars, total transfers zero.
I'll make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. This is the usual, moving some excess money around to hopefully get through overtime and holiday pay for the rest of the year, right? That's a hope, I had ten dollars left, so that's hope.
Sorry, does holiday, why does holiday also kept typically getting moved in? Is it because it's, you're paying overtime on holidays?
Correct, we got our biggest ones coming right now. We don't get that, we're not there, no.
I do have a question, line one oh five that says it's adding money into that one. Correctional officer one oh five, one oh one, is that, I hear that correctly and I see it correctly?
Yes.
Third one down?
Yes.
How, how are we to the point where we're adding money into?
Again, it was one that got paid twice to people.
We'll make sure, and then I have another question with this and the first transfer that we did, there's thirty-seven thousand, five hundred left over in clothing allowance?
If they haven't been there for an entire year, they do not get a clothing allowance, whether it's the merit side or the jail. Now, they may get their second one depending on when they got hired in a year, but that's why there's excess funds there. Especially in the jail, because we have so much turnaround, that, but I can't not budget it as if they're all there, just in case.
That would be my question, thank you for clarifying, it's appreciated.
I have a quick one.
Yep.
Um, I'm just curious on, like, I totally get what you're doing here. I'm not understanding how we've got all of these different department heads that had this error with insurance, where we're negative in this insurance, but you've got twenty thousand extra insurance that you can pull from.
Okay, again, when we did the budget, remember, I have to plan for, every employee we come in here with will want X. I pray they don't want X, there's excess funds, you get them back, but if it's not there, then I have to come back and I have to have you appropriate money to me.
I totally understand all that, that's, let me take a stab at it, please.
Brian, you're asking about, in my opinion, in two different things, health insurance, she has to budget for the absolute most, that was not an issue. It was the disability, short-term and life that HR did.
Which mine wasn't wrong.
I don't know if that helps clarify it.
Clarifies everything, yes, that's what I was getting at, so the, the errors earlier were just disability and, and, and those health insurance, got it?
But mine wasn't actually wrong per se, I don't know how I managed to have enough, but for whatever reason, I had two disability lines, and I think it was clarified that one was short-term and long-term where they were combined now. Part of my money didn't get moved. So that's why I had one line that was in the negative and the other line was still in the positive, so this is just moving it all into one line now, that. So that's why I had one line that was in the negative and the other line was still in the positive. So this is just moving it all into one line now that we're good to go and this will get us through to the end of the year.
If I may explain something that may help, may not, I don't know. We are in the year of conversion. So when we can add our conversion, we all went over the fact that, hey, we're going to take a line that has disability and life in it, okay? Because some departments put it together, some departments separated it, it was kind of like all over the place, all over the board. So in the new year, as all the new numbers roll out and all the new descriptions for those numbers roll out. She will then have a line that says disability insurance, life insurance. This year, it looks weird. I'm not going to lie, even in the finance meeting, I was like, huh, huh, right? As soon as Whitney said, oh, I think I know what happened, she had this and it splits into two. In my head, I, I know that because I work with that on a daily basis. Other people don't work in it on a daily basis, you know what I mean? To know exactly what Elizabeth was talking about when she said that. But I think a lot of people may be confused this year when they're looking at their expense reports because of that factor. Anything that we had that was maybe combined this year will in fact separate out. And going through conversion motions, we have to do some at a time. As far as getting those numbers, you guys probably are aware of that, you got to get your numbers in order, you know what I mean, for the role for the new year.
So you're saying it could be more again next month?
More what?
Doing the same thing and possibly.
I don't think so. I think everybody, I think the reason you're seeing this right now is because we are getting towards the end of the year and that's when people start really, really looking at their budget. They look at it right before budget and they look at it hardcore right before the end of the year. I mean, those are the two times, you know what I mean? So, um, if people are confused when you bring that up and you're just like, what the heck, you know, this doesn't make sense to me. Give us a, give Whitney and Elizabeth, they handle that, Kita handles corrections, but Whitney and Elizabeth deal with the budget. So if you have budget questions as far as how your lines read, give Whitney or, and if you email them, email them both together. That way if one's at lunch, the other one can get back to you. So if you want to call them, they each have their own line.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, roll call please.
Thanks for that, Eugene.
Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper, yes.
Thank you.
Twelve sixteen auditor. One seventy-one FICA, negative nine hundred twenty-four dollars. One seventy-two perf, positive nine hundred twenty-four dollars, for a total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. I think this is more the same of moving those around. Do we have any questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
And Ms. Piper, yes. And I would like to just make a note that that is, it says auditor and the auditor does oversee this fund, but this is outside of the County General, this is called ineligible standard deduction, ISD. Alright. Forty-nine eleven Delco Fair and Expo. Two twenty operating supplies, positive one thousand. Three ninety-two, three ninety, other services and charges, negative one thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
I'll make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, and this is to replenish some of your cleaning supplies for the rest of the year.
Correct.
Do you have any additional questions for Carrie? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
And Ms. Piper, yes. Eleven thirty-five accumulative bridge, one twenty-six overtime, positive fifteen thousand dollars. One seventy-three health insurance, negative fifteen thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, and you're hoping this will get you through the rest of the year.
Right. So this is our normal, just like anyone else, end of the year, just to make sure we can get through the end of the year if we would have any kind of emergency snow that we've got our guys called out for.
Any additional questions for Carrie? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Eleven seventy-six motor vehicle highway. One ninety-eight, one-on-one, part-time, negative thirty thousand dollars. One twenty-six overtime, positive thirty thousand dollars. One seventy-seven unemployment, negative one thousand dollars. One seventy-five disability insurance, positive one thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, more correcting of the insurance issues. Do you have any additional questions?
Uh, just a quick question. Can we not use any part-time help at all this year?
No, we did. Um, this is just extra that we had leftover. We didn't have as many as we normally had. Um, we used a couple of our full-time employees to do some mowing this year that normally we would have full-time or part-timers due.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Twenty-one hundred adult user fees. One seventy-one FICA, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. One seventy-two perf, four hundred and forty-five dollars. One seventy-three health insurance, negative five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. One seventy-five disability insurance, positive six hundred and seventy dollars. Two twenty operating supplies, positive one thousand two hundred dollars. Three ten professional services, positive three thousand dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. More of the same, do we have any additional questions?
I have a quick one.
Yep.
What do you plan on doing with the operating supplies and also the professional services?
Sure, and I am some court administrator. So some of this was just fixing those rates and then the rest of it is. For the operating supplies would be drug screens, where they do drug screens in-house. Um, we have a. Grant from DCPC for drug screens through, through community corrections, but what we're finding is that it's costing more well over the grant. We had one quarter that cost the entire amount of the grant almost. So we're going to have to start doing in-house drug screens, um, just because we don't have the money. The other part is that our kiosk, that's through the, another grant. Um, they're saying, Jane informed me that we're, might not be getting as much for the grant this coming year. And we're already going to be behind, so we're going to try to cover that cost or have it ready to be covered in case they don't have that amount there, so that's that three thousand dollars.
So you're just ma- maneuvering the money in case you need it?
We're maneuvering money in case we need it because we're afraid we're not going to have it. Now, they're saying we're going to have it now, but I still want to go ahead and transfer it just in case. So we definitely need the twelve hundred for drug screens, we're have to start doing in-house. Uh, we can't afford those, those, we're going to still have to send some over to community corrections, we can't send all. Um, and then the, the kiosk for the three thousand, we don't know until probably December what we're going to do with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the twelve hundred operating supplies is for the drug screen?
Yeah, they're, the drug screens, we order like five hu- or three or four hundred drug screens to get them on hand. Yep.
Alright, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Sorry, I missed Mr. Mokel. I've done that a couple of times, so I am very sorry. Mr. Mokel, not present. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Alright. Eighty-one ninety-three FRC problem-solving court grant. One seventy-three health insurance, negative one hundred dollars. One seventy-five disability insurance, positive one hundred dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. I think the rest of these are all a lot of little corrections with the insurance. Do we have any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twelve twenty-two statewide nine-one-one, one seventy-five disability insurance, positive three hundred dollars. One seventy-four life insurance, negative three hundred dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, more of the same, any questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Does somebody have to be here to represent them? Is that a rule? Is that just a guideline?
I don't know if it's a rule, it's kind of like a thing we do, but.
There we go.
There he is. Alright, he's here.
Oh, no, we said Fred, not Steve Gattis.
Alright, roll call. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
And Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Twelve twenty-four county assessor reassessment, one seventy-five disability insurance, negative ten dollars. One seventy-six, one seventy-four life insurance, positive ten dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions? Roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Thank you. Eleven fifty-nine health department, one seventy-three health insurance, negative seven hundred dollars, one seventy-five disability insurance, positive seven hundred dollars, total transfer zero.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion by Ryan, second by, was that you Eugene?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, any questions on this? More of the same, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Yes, please. On the addendums, still out of County General, twelve hundred supplemental public defender, one seventy-six longevity, positive one thousand one hundred. Three twenty-two postage and freight, negative two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. Three ten professional services, positive one thousand six hundred twenty-five, total transfer zero.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions on this? Alright, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the season for unhealthy people, so it's fine. Fighting over the tissues. Alright, appropriations, yes please. Uh, County General, one fifty-three Commissioners. One ninety-six, one twenty-six overtime, uh, ten thousand dollars for a total of ten thousand dollars.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene.
So I have a question. Um. Thank you. I appreciate that, thank you. What does our handbook indicate is the. Process for the policy for comp time versus overtime?
Uh, co- comp time, we can only accrue eighty hours. And then after that, um. Overtime is paid out as they, as they, um, make it. Yeah, comp time is taken out on days off. They take days off too. And what's happened with this is you can see on the paper that I handed out. These guys are just working. I mean, they shouldn't have any more than eighty hours and then one has eight hundred and eighty-five, one seventy-one, you can see this, but they're called out at two and three o'clock in the morning if someone decides to. Stick a sheet down the toilet, just like today, the, we've got three out there working overtime. Because the justice center is down. And so they're all.
Overtime.
Pardon?
Ten thirty on a Tuesday.
What, what, they cl- yeah, they're closed.
What do you mean? Why are we closed?
Yeah, they have no facility, so.
How does that constitute overtime?
Okay, I'm not saying today they are, but I know they've been out there all night, because this happened yesterday at three o'clock.
Okay.
So I know that they've been out there half the night working. I don't know for sure, I don't know how many hours they put, they've not contacted me yet, but I can pretty much. They're all there, yeah, and they're probably there all night. So what I'm saying that this is going to get us caught up until, um, I think it's a ten-one. They have kind of, we've really pushed them not to make a lot of comp time or overtime hours, but there are, there is a few hours I think that Steve has, but I can't guarantee.
Why isn't he taking time off to?
There's not enough hours in the day for him to take off because he's called in anyway. He took, he's taken two or three weeks off to use his comp time down. And, but he's still called out to go out there and pick up something. You, you don't get it. They, those guys. Those guys don't do what Steve does. He's the superintendent or the supervisor, so he can't, he does more than what the other two do. But they're not going to call him, they're not going to call the other two guys at two o'clock in the morning. Pick something, if a boiler goes down or something, so they call Steve.
So what is it, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
What is this paid, fifty-one ninety-one?
Uh, fifty-one ninety-one, wouldn't, oh yeah, that's already been paid and that was paid on nine eleven, so we can take that away from, um.
Did we approve that?
No, it was a mistake. I hate to even say this, but. This was taken out of, Tanya, can you help me on this, how that happened? We, we took out, when payroll was done. This amount was put into Steve's payroll line. And he thought it was for his overtime pay and he cashed, he used the check. Well, I, we found out like the day after. And what happened exactly? Because I was on vacation, didn't they, go through the auditor's office and the auditor this, the auditor paid this, but I'm sure we had to pay you back.
But it's, it's entered through, whoever does the payroll, it's entered through their department, we pull it in.
Yeah, the VIP.
If he had, he could have been, I believe he had done work for us.
Right, he'd done work for, yes, and so it was a mistake.
So the number was not changed by the department when they entered the payroll because it shows right there, if they don't, you know, I mean, you got to check your number to see what line it's on. There's a default button, I don't know if the default wasn't hit, because he should have a default.
Yeah.
Um, I can't really explain who, you know, how the payroll was entered or who.
But he got the fifty-one ninety-one, thinking it was paid from Ed's office.
Paid out of our office rather than, um, his normal pay line. And.
So what's the corrective action to make sure that doesn't happen again?
Well, when the department heads enter their payrolls, they need to be looking at the line number. And making sure that that line number matches that employee.
But again, you're putting that, so what I'm, what I'm getting at is.
Or not, not even the department, sorry.
You develop a corrective action and that prevents that issue from ever happening again. From what you're saying, it's still on the employee to look. What I want to know is what do we put in place to make sure that if the employee misses it, that still doesn't happen?
Um, I have talked to my payroll deputy about it, um, and told her if she can, you know, go through and double, triple check. I put a second pair of eyes on it after she checks it, then I have another pair of eyes that goes over what she's. I put a second pair of eyes on it after she checks it, and I have another pair of eyes that goes over what she's already went over in order to, cause there's certain things where you gotta pull part-time out of the mix, because maybe they don't get perf. They're, you know, I've never sat there and done payroll, but as far as how she explains it to me, as far as the steps of how it's done, alls I can do is enforce that they are double, triple checking the work of
The department.
what comes in.
So the money, in, in this case, somebody put in for an extra fifty-one hundred dollars. Into the payroll system.
That's correct.
Correct.
And it was paid out, and it was paid out of the wrong place, so then it, normally, it would just be reversed. It would just be like a correction.
And we tried to get that done, yeah.
Can do that, however, by the next day, I believe he said he spent it.
He spent it.
Is that correct?
Yes. We tried to reverse it the minute we found out. But Ryan, a lot of this is human, this was human error.
Well, I know that, that's why I'm saying what.
Well, I mean, we can only tell.
Corrective, most errors are human errors, but corrective action eliminates that possibility.
Well, I understand that, but you can only look at it so many times. I mean, I don't know. I mean, Tanya and I was both baffled that this even got through.
Well, the other thing I was curious about, this happened in, in September eleventh, a full two and a half months ago. This is the first I've heard about it.
Well, this is the first I brought it to you.
I know, why, why would you wait two and a half months?
Well, because I, I, I don't know. We just didn't get it on the agenda.
So, I have another question. This comp time hours is just for twenty-twenty-four?
Yes.
They've accumulated a hundred and seventy-one hours?
Yes. From one-one to, uh, ten-one. With a hundred and seventy-one hours for, um.
My suggestion would be that there's a combination of, we're going to clear some of this up in twenty-twenty-five via time off versus we're coming for all the money on comp. The, the policy of comp time, while clear on the max number of hours, as you're meeting that threshold, there's gotta be more due diligence done to offset that, because it is a financial burden to the county to pay out this money on a regular basis. And I'm, this is for everything, not just for this example. Am I wrong in stating that? I, 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 it's.
No, I don't think you're wrong in saying that, but it's like, on the other side of it, how do we tell them?
Maybe it's not you in this case, because these people report to the commissioners, so it's their job to tell them.
Okay.
To do that, just as if it's an elected official's employee, or a department head's employee in that case. Um, because we have others that, you know, there's, there's challenges like this in, in other areas, so. Um.
So can I? I have a question, just clarify it. I think I heard you say Pam, that comp time should be capped at eighty hours.
Yes.
They shouldn't have more. So, if they earn eighty-one or more, why isn't that paid out in overtime, so that way the comp time is capped at that eighty hours?
It, that's what we.
Well, what?
Well, we, our, our, um, overtime line was cut last year, so we didn't have any overtime money to pay out of this. Pay this out of.
Yeah, but with all fairness, we just had multiple departments come up here with the, with the errors, with the disability insurance, and they found ten, twelve, seventeen thousand dollars. The commissioners department and the sheriff's department are the two largest departments in the entire county budget. So if those smaller departments can find twelve thousand, ten thousand this late in the year, I, I just, I was, it's, I can't believe that you guys can't find ten thousand dollars in the budget somewhere.
I don't do the budget, Sarah does, but.
Usually by the end of the year, all of my money gets transferred into utilities and stuff like that.
So I'm just glad I'd asked the question since Ryan's dancing around it. Do you have money elsewhere that you can transfer to cover overtime?
Yeah, we wouldn't have come here in front of you guys if we wouldn't have, and I even talked to one of the commissioners last night.
So you would have been here, just would have been for a different reason.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
I have a question as well. Um, we're showing county general at the moment are, they're above six million, six sixty-one. We've got requests here totaling a hundred and six thousand, I'll take it down to six five sixty-five. I think when we did the budget, we were projecting that we would end the year with seven million in county general, is that, am I remembering correctly?
Pretty close to that, because there's gonna be some expenses.
How are we gonna end up? Are we gonna be essentially four hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars short of our, what we thought we'd be?
Do you remember the amount that we allotted for the upcoming appropriations between July and December? I guess, two hundred thousand? I was thinking thirty. So, um, we would need to check that number for you, Mr. Hughes, as far as what we accounted for, you know, how we always put in for a guesstimate of what you guys will appropriate.
Between now and, and the end of the year, we're not expecting
We'll have to see.
additional revenue beyond what we expected. Is that correct or not?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't, I don't think so.
As far as we know, we're not gonna have the balance that we thought we were gonna have for next, going into next year, right?
If I may, we don't know the amount that is gonna be returned from every budget, if, e.
It's true. But we also have to pay out money in January, the encumbrages, and I believe there are some conversations about the employees' pay increases. Let's get it paid out in January for next year as well. Remember during the budget time? And there's some conversations about trust us, and, and we'll, we'll fix it in January. So that's gonna have to come out of that as well.
Salaries study, not actual salaries.
About the encant flies to today.
But they're budget, and they shouldn't be changed.
You're talking about non-budgeted. Pardon? You're talking about non-budgeted item, items, pays, Ryan is?
No, I, I'm saying that, my understanding, is when we were going, talking about the salary increases, there, I don't even remember what the reason was, but there was something.
The experience matrix money, because we couldn't put it in the budget.
There it is.
Because we don't have the lines founded yet, which hopefully we will here soon today. And so we, that's why we were like, trust us, because we have, we have to do these other steps first.
Right.
But we took those, those dollars into account when we approved the budget, like that was part of our.
So that's part of that seven million that's already expected to come out of that?
Not expected to come out, we calculated it in already.
Mm-hmm.
It's baked in the cake.
Yeah.
Already there, yeah.
But wouldn't that, would that not be affected if we're under the operating balance? I mean, I don't know how much it is, I don't think that much, but.
It shouldn't be affected by that. Uh, your operating balance would be a number that would fluctuate then.
Oh.
We can check on that number as well, as far as what was put in for the, um, estimated appropriations for the last half of this year versus how much has been appropriated thus far.
Something, just so I'm on the right, make sure I understand this Pam. The ten thousand dollar appropriation request is to pay out these comp time hours, correct? But the comp, but this is twelve hundred dollars more than what's on.
Well. Yeah, so this is, this, these hours were the, in October, so if they accrued any hours from October to the end of the year, she just put a padding in there.
We still have all of December.
I, I'm not opposed to it, I just wish, I just like to be a transfer instead of appropriation.
Yeah.
There should be a policy that if it is capped at eighty hours, that there's no, there is no going over that. Or, or there's a mechanism in place for that to be put down. Because in the end, it becomes a financial burden to the county to pay out overages. So, in this case, if I'm a commissioner, I'd be indicating for Steve particularly, since he was already overpaid without approval. Um, that that thirteen hundred dollars gets chewed up in taking time off at the end of the year or whatever. Same with the other two.
So you want me to tell the three guys they can take off in December?
No, I'm saying that there should be a plan in place for them via the commissioners.
When they get high like that, hours like that, because Lee checks the time every time we do, and she'll report back to me how many comp hours these guys have got, and we're always telling them, use your days, use your days, and it's.
My office is use it or lose it.
Use it or lose it, that's how, it's the most public areas. I bet if we changed that policy.
Well, I mean, that's, that's totally, that's, yeah.
One additional factor is that commissioners had requested fifteen thousand in overtime for the twenty-twenty-four budget, we cut that out.
Yes, so.
We, we appropriated nothing last year.
For this year.
For this year.
Twenty-twenty-four.
Our year.
Was that fifty-one, uh, ninety-two that was illegally paid, was that paid out of, um, uh, overtime? Do we know?
Tanya.
Was paid out of what? Part-time?
I think it was, no, I think it was paid over, in overtime when that, that fifty-one ninety-one went through your office.
Would that be if so?
How would it be paid out of that if we had a, a zero? We just said that the number for twenty-twenty-four was zero, so we couldn't have paid fifteen hundred out of that one.
It was paid out of, um.
I can't remember what, what you paid it out of.
I think it was the part-time overtime line, like from our department.
In the twelve sixteen?
Yeah.
Because you combined those two, some part-time overtime, okay, that makes sense.
But we probably wouldn't be coming up here asking for this if they hadn't cut our overtime, if they hadn't cut our overtime.
Sounds like they don't wanna have us sit down with the commissioners.
No. Yeah, for me personally, but just. I would agree with President Piper, and I'm just gonna say it for myself. There are a lot of steps on this, and there's really no, there's nothing in place to continue it going any further from what it is now. Um, for that reason, I'm, I'm probably gonna be against it. I would encourage you to find the money in your budget. Yeah.
Alright, we don't have any further questions. Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Oh.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
No.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper, yes.
I would ask Pam that, or Sarah, um, that, and I know there's nothing for December, so. That there's a, there is a conversation that happens about this, a plan to address it long-term, not just this.
Right, not just this fix.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not for penalizing the employee, to be honest with you, and so it's not a no to them, it's more, we gotta fix it.
I, I feel bad for them, because they put in the hours and we can't pay them. If I stand up here as an advocate for my employees, for my employees.
We can pay them if you find the money to transfer for our next meeting.
I mean, the law says they gotta get paid.
Yeah.
They're gonna get paid.
It, it's also, and to Jessica's point, if there is a plan that we're gonna reduce X and come back with different numbers, because we've put something in place for them to use up some, or whatever the plan actually is. But, again, this is the lazy way of, we're just gonna pay it out, because we've not really addressed the actual issue. And, again, unfortunately, they're taking the brunt of it, I understand that, but we do have to deal with it, I think.
I mean, I mean, that's a twenty-four hour building, why, why don't we have two people working day shift and one guy on night shift?
Well, that's why I stood up here at budget and asked for an extra employee out there, so we could have two and two, two work nights and two work day. And that wasn't even brought up. My new employee, wasn't even, employee wasn't even brought up.
One person per shift.
No, why couldn't I do two and one?
Or just one and one, 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 one?
I don't know. I mean, we'd have to.
Again, same, same challenge.
One and one, and then Steve over all of them, then you're still gonna get.
Yeah, it gets for safety reasons, you gotta have, you, most places, they, they wanna make sure an employee's not alone, but in that building, there's, I mean, sheriff's offices in that building, there's always somebody in that building. I think that if somebody gets creative and thinks outside the box, there's, there's a solution in there somewhere, that doesn't equal these guys having to wait on getting the money that they rightfully earned. You know, I know those guys, they, they work hard.
I did that report for you, Ryan.
And I absolutely appreciate that.
And you said, anybody does that, I give them a yes.
Well, I know, you, you, you did call me out correctly on that, but there's too many.
I know I did.
Too many holes in this process to approve it. There's nothing to prevent it from going over that.
I'm just saying.
I do, I do wanna make sure and clarify that we are down to council members today, but for a vote to pass, we still have to have four votes for anything to pass today, so this is an example of a three-two vote, so it failed.
And now, I'm gonna say this for the second time, cause I said it to Pam personally earlier. It's not fair that she's the one up here arguing for this, when these employees report to the commissioners, so. For what it's.
I'd second that.
Alright. Did we roll call yet, or? Yeah, we did roll call on it.
I'll make sure, yeah.
One thirty-seven prosecutor. Five thirty-six equipment, five thousand eighty-five dollars for a total of five thousand eighty-five dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. We had a color copier that went out. You have any additional questions?
Do you have money anywhere else that you could have moved?
Actually, this, it, we, they told us we needed to do, this is an appropriation, but we have a prosecutor's, um, seizure fund that I sent the, the, um, total we brought in this year to you yesterday. We brought in sixteen thousand this year into that fund and have not used any out of it.
What could we use up?
That's what I've asked for it to be, but they, the auditor's office said it had to be an appropriation instead of a transfer. Cause that money goes into county general. It doesn't have its own, the revenue doesn't have its own fund, it goes into county general. So she's just basically saying that they put the money into county general.
Good, so it's still coming technically out of it, they just painted it out of a different line. I got you. Alright, thank you for explaining that.
Yep. Other questions?
No, I'd answer my question though. Yeah, do you have money in your budget to pay for this?
I do not.
Alright. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And in the end, the operating balance of county general includes this money, it not includes this money.
I mean, the, the only other place I may have it is that transfer that I asked for today, that would be a salary line.
But this isn't.
That which will be coming back after my two weeks.
This isn't an additional purchase, this is something that broke that you need to replace, correct?
Correct, yes. Yes, the main board went out, they could not re, um, they could not get parts any longer, um.
Is this a used cost or a purchase?
No, it's a purchase. It was a used.
See, I thought those things were like thirty brand.
Yeah, it wa, it was a repossessed one.
Oh. People get their copy machines repossessed?
Yeah, apparently.
So everything's out there.
Alright, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes. Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper, yes.
Thank you.
You.
Alright, one twenty-seven treasurer, five forty construction, one thousand dollars for a total of one thousand dollars.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, and this is for adding, um, some walls in your office.
Right.
Create an office.
Yes, we're, um, creating an office for the chief deputy. Uh, actually, she's gonna be taking over mine, I'll be moving back to the new one. Um, this is to give her, um, the privacy that she needs, um, when she's on the, you know, on the phone or in person where she can talk with somebody. Um, right now, she's out in the, the general area, and, um, we've had several instances where it, the privacy is not there. Um, it's busy up front, so the noise level, and she can't hear, and just, I mean, it makes it to where it's easier. Um, we can do this for the thousand dollars, um, and it is coming out of the mobile home permit fund fee, um, which as of October thirty-first had approximately two thousand dollars in it this month. So far, we're probably adding another five hundred to that.
So far, we're probably adding another five hundred to that, um, so we'll be, um, just taking money from that.
So I'm gonna, I, I joked about it at finance, but the, the fact that you guys indicated that Steve could do this work. On his own time?
I believe it is, yeah, so it's gonna be coming out of, we'll be paying him directly to him, yeah. Yeah, he's not getting any more comp time, so.
Just for clarification purposes, is there any? This, this question is for Ben. No worries about any ethical legal concerns about hiring our maintenance guy to do work for the county off the clock?
I would defer to. Commissioners and their council for that, I'm, I'm honestly not certain.
And a thousand dollars you're talking about, that, that would be to pay the individual who does the.
For materials.
You guys are gonna paint everything, right?
Yeah, we're gonna paint, um, it's just materials and then his costs.
I do have a question, it's more for the auditor's office regarding this, what is the mobile home permit fee fund number? Would you repeat that, please? Forty-one, okay. Part of County General.
The general number for fees in County.
Not, it's not just mobile home fees that go into this.
Right, we separate, we have numbers, I work with Kita and we know how many, we also have a tracking system, how many permits we do. Um, in a year's time, and we do it by monthly and we, we know, we track that, I have a, on a spreadsheet. Like, so we know exactly how many.
Alright, anything else, roll call please, Mister Flanagan, Mister Hughes. Mister Cant. Mister Mokel. Mister Webb. Mister Whitehead. Ms. Piper, yes.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good holidays.
Thank you. One twenty-six auditor, three eleven contractual services, twenty thousand dollars for a total of twenty thousand dollars.
Make the motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, uh, this is, actually, Tanya, I'll let you explain.
Tanya Dunsmore, Chief Deputy Auditor, this is a, basically a guesstimate at this point in time. This is for everything the council has worked on from the beginning in budget to the, and, well, actually, it dates back to when you approved the salary study. Then, um, went on to approve things, do that new salary study, new to, and then the budget. And then the, um. In, everyone knows HR sending out the new PI forms, we're trying to get everything like uploaded by the end of the year. For all of the salary study information, uh, including the salary ordinance as usual. And, um, anything and everything that comes with that, so. That goes from, um, not only just our like job description, but like it goes into your, um. Classifications and, I mean, honestly, you guys probably explain it better than I can because you've done a lot of work on it. Um, but this is a guesstimate, as, and then anything unused would of course go back to County General. To have the money prepared and ready for if they can fit us in by the end of the year. To get this all, um, electronically uploaded from your files.
Yep, um, so a little update on that, and I'll try to be as succinct as I can for Eugene's benefit, um. I talked to Ed on Friday about the, what absolutely positively needed to be headed into the system. Prior to January one. To know that people are gonna get paid the adjustments on their salary. And I don't wanna speak for him, but, cause this is kind of just now occurring to me, but based on that conversation, there is like very little chance that. The, because he got a quote for them to do a review just to make sure that it could be done. And the quote was twelve hundred dollars. That has to happen first, then, once they do that, they'll make a determination on what can be. Um, imported into the system, whether the format that we've given them, that I spent a month with Pam and others to fix. Is use, usable and can be imported. What Ed indicated is, obviously, we just have to make sure that the salary numbers are current, based on the, um, figures that we approved in the budget. I indicated, and Jessica and I have talked previously, like, it, that's gonna have to be a manual process, most likely. Between now and the end of December, or not the end of December, by like the thirteenth or whatever the date was, that all that needs to get plugged in, so. Um, we're willing to help volunteer to do that if needed, um. What I would suggest is we simply approve the twelve hundred dollar quote, not the full amount. And then if we get an okay that they're able to take all of the FLSA statuses, the job classifications, et cetera. And import them, that probably isn't gonna happen until the first of the year anyway, we could appropriate the money for that in our January special meet, or, you know, first meeting. And do that, like, that's probably the more, um. Fiscally responsible thing to do probably in the short term, even though Tanya was indicating, we would get the money back, but. Right now, it's probably highly unlikely they're gonna get it done.
And can we do an appropriation at our reorg meeting on the second? Just transferred, right? As long as it's advertised?
I feel like we did, I don't know if it was last year or the year before.
We can, we just have to make sure it's advertised, too, okay.
I, I haven't.
And, and I told, I'll just say this out loud, I'm off between Christmas and New Year's, like, I told Matt if I have to come in a whole day or whatever. Hang out with you guys and help gather entry or whatever, I'm, I'm willing to do that, so.
I would agree with, um. Yeah, for a couple of reasons, number one, sounds like we have to do that step first anyway. Um, number two, uh, I don't like appropriating money based off of guesstimates without any invoices. Um, saying that that money's necessary, uh, and number three, it sounds like something that, that we can do ourselves. Um, if it's just importing data, maybe I'm misunderstanding that, but if it's just typing things into computer. Uh, that seems something that we can do without spending twenty thousand dollars and, uh.
I, I was, yeah, let me clarify that, so, or not clarify, but just play devil's advocate, cause all of the year-end work does have to get done at the auditor's office. So W two's payroll, all the things associated with that, so there is a ton for them to have to accomplish at the end of the year, this is one other additional item. Um, that we're in essence forcing them to do because we've made all these changes, so we are adding to the burden, I guess, isn't it?
Well, I, I don't, I don't wanna gloss over the fact that it's not a difficult challenge, and I'm sure it is. Uh, anytime your back's against the wall and there's a deadline, uh, so I don't wanna, I don't want to come off of that, but I, I wanna personally. Say thanks to, to you guys who are volunteering your time during the holidays to help out with this, um, that's awesome, and I'm, I'm sure that the employees in the auditor's or. Auditor's office are very appreciative of that extra helping hand, but I would agree with Matt as far as, um, modifying this to the twelve hundred dollars.
Honestly, um, just, just to point this out, I'm not sure that would be legal per state board of accounts. Considering you're the fiscal officers, or fiscal body, I mean, not, I don't know that would have to be that.
Okay, well, I mean, if we can get some, you know, we.
I, I'm not, I don't appreciate the. I will come to you on that, um, oftentimes, there's state board of account regulations that would be against that.
Well, yeah, we can adjust that or find some additional likely bodies, Mr. Gavin has already, you know, said he might consider helping too, so.
You had a motion to amend to twelve hundred dollars.
Uh, I'm making a motion to amend the number to twelve hundred dollars.
Second.
I made a motion to amend to twelve hundred.
Can we get a response?
Nope, I'm sorry.
Can we get a response from the auditor's office on that? Plan, yeah, the amendment.
As far as accepting the amendment.
Yeah, if we're. If we amended twelve hundred and then passed that, is that.
And appropriate at reorg if we need to?
I mean, based off of Matt's conversation with auditor, the twelve hundred dollars. Does that allow you to do what you need to do, knowing that we can't make an appropriation for?
That allows it to go further to the next meeting, which is a commissioner's meeting, which is a contract that has to be signed. Prior to the company even touching it, looking at it, um, once they do that, it's gonna be a disappointment. As far as I'm concerned, um, if they say, yeah, we can fit you in, because we don't do appropriations in December. So if they come back and say, yeah, we can fit you in, we can do it, all your information looks good, yada, yada. That's gonna be a huge disappointment, I think, really, not only to me, but probably to you guys as well, for all the work that you've put in, so, um.
Yeah, so let me, let me, and so the basis of that is because it's not something that necessity has to be done by the end of the year. The payroll number, the, the pay number has to be adjusted, but the Ed's statement to me was that the classification work. Did not have to be absolutely in there, we can pay on January second, based on the figure, we can adjust. The ca, the classification work can be done over time.
Okay, and I know you guys spoke, I believe yesterday, or something, so.
So, I mean, I am, uh, in a bit going out on a limb based on that conversation, this was just him and I dialoguing to say, hey. It doesn't sound like there's a, maybe a less than fifty fifty chance we're gonna be able to get into that, we gotta get a commissioner contract, like you said, when's their next meeting?
Um, the second.
So next week?
December second.
Yeah, next week. Execute it, get them in here, you're running up against that thirteenth date in less than two weeks, basically, right, so like. It's reasonable to me that there's, probably that's not gonna happen, so. We probably need to make plans to figure out how we're gonna help you make sure, if there's anything we can do. To make sure that, at a minimum, the ordinance, uh, spreadsheet that was sent out, which matches what I sent to you. Are plugged in as the salary items for the year.
Alright, my, my question is, if that company comes back and says, alright, we're ready to schedule you.
That they could do it now or they could do it in January, it's, it, my understanding is that it could be.
But they won't do it until we've.
We'll appropriate the money.
Which would be at the earliest, the second commissioner meeting in December.
So why couldn't we?
If we get to the first of the year, then will you use money out of contractual services versus having to have money appropriated?
I don't know that answer, I don't know what Ed's answer would be on that.
Well, I mean, money would at least be there.
We can put it back. Can always appropriate it back into it.
Alright, I'm, I'm satisfied with my answer.
Okay, roll call on the motion to reduce the amount from twenty thousand to twelve hundred.
May I ask who made the motion?
Matt made the motion and Bill seconded, so this is a roll call on the amendment. Alright, Mister Flanagan, Mister Hughes. Mister Cant. Mister Mokel. Mister Webb. Mister Whitehead. Ms. Piper, yes. Oh, we should do another roll call on the twelve hundred?
On the appropriation.
On the, oh, my bad, that was just for. So roll call on the, uh, appropriation of twelve hundred, alright, so Mister Flanagan. Mister Hughes. Mister Cant. Mister Mokel. Mister Webb. Mister Whitehead. Ms. Piper, yes.
Matt, for having that communication with the auditor.
One thirty-nine public defender, one eighty-six, one thirteen attorney fees. Seventy-two thousand dollars, seventy-two and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And one ninety-three, one seventy-three health insurance, thirty-four thousand and twenty dollars and fifty-four cents. For a total of one hundred and six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-four cents.
The motion to approve, second.
Uh, motion was right, Ryan, second by Eugene, I'm sure we have plenty of discussions, so maybe you wanna just share what we're looking at here, shall we?
Okay, um, on the. The appropriation request, uh, for the attorney fees and insurance, if you, the second and third pages of those. Kind of explain why, uh, we need what we need. Uh, we have still a lot of trials left, um, and that are level one or murder cases. And we have. Eleven appeals due for the end of the year, or, I'm sorry, nine appeals due, well, eleven total, nine at full price. Uh, there've just been a heck of a lot of trials this year, uh, which you, most trial, unless you're found not guilty, you appeal. So, it's, I've explained before how it's a trickle-down effect as far as charges. Then you've got a trial and then tran, uh, an appeal, you have to have the transcript, so it's very expensive to try a case. And, uh, why the reason these gentlemen and ladies make extra money to do a murder trial that lasts over three days. Is because that's three days out of their office, uh, that they're not making. Uh, money privately. The explanation of the insurance appropriation request is a lot more complicated, the. What I've done is my air way short. Uh, on my estimation for insurance, I did have two employees. Who went from raving insurance from the county to family insurance without informing me. Uh, that won't happen again.
That was at the beginning of this year, or last, the end of last year, beginning of this year.
It was, uh, yes, yes. Because nobody's had a baby or gotten married this year, uh, so, we have. And I hired a new employee who is now on our insurance, um, Steve, he replaced Steve Bell, who was not on our insurance. But, yeah, I just requested, my request for twenty-four was way off. And when I do my quarterly reports for reimbursement, and I report on the insurance, I report on how much we've. Spent that quarter, so that I can get the forty percent reimbursement and on what we've spent. And I did not realize, and it's my fault, Ryan, because we're all supposed to take responsibility, and it is my fault. That how low our insurance, our health insurance line was getting. So, I'm making these requests, the, I did. Transfer. I did, I am asking to appropriate money, um, in our supplemental fund to help offset. You know, the original insurance request. I have been. I spoke to our executive director and the director of operations of the public defender, state public defender commission. And beca, the attorney fees can't really be helped, because however many trials go in a year. We have no way of knowing at the beginning of the year, um, Emily's been in this shape, I, I've been in this shape. I mean, we can't control the number of trials, obviously, the insurance, that is my mistake. I spoke to the people at the commission, they said for next year. Uh, my insurance is gonna be low, because what we had spent from January to June, when I prepared my budget for twenty-five. Was this much, it, but it was too low, not enough had been taken out. So, uh, I doubled it when I prepared it for twenty-five, added ten percent, like, we were supposed to add ten percent. So it's gonna be low for twenty-five also, the public defender commission told me because. Uh, that would be one time next year, I will be able to make up the difference out of the supplemental fund next year. And they said if we have a year that is extremely high on attorney fees. One year, I could use supplemental funding out of that. They don't like that, but since it's gonna be a one-time thing, and they said, then if you don't budget it up for twenty-six, we're gonna have a problem. And I said, got that, the commission.
So, you're saying that you got approval, so to speak, from this, the wizard in the sky about the money that you guys collect on the supplemental funds, to use it in next fiscal year for the potential one hundred and thirty K shortage that you have?
Yes.
How much is in that? I looked that up last time.
Now, this is, still, this appropriation is still forty percent reimbursable, uh, which would be reimbursed, uh, for the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, so we would be getting that about March of twenty twenty-five, forty percent back. I, you know, we may not have to use all these attorney fees that I'm asking for, I'm hoping we don't. And that that would go back to County General. But at the time that we had to submit these appropriation requests, that's where we were standing. And Matt, I know you were asking about what we were allowed to spend these supplemental funds on, because you feel like we can't on anything, I get that. I have printed off, and I will email to you all, uh, the standards and guidelines for the State Public Defender Commission that we have to follow, and I've highlighted what exactly we are allowed to spend our supplemental funds on. I will email that to you, but I have a copy here if you want. Matt.
So, and Shelley's saying that it's forty percent reimbursable. Or really appropriating. It'd be what, sixty-three, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and two bucks? Looks a lot less scary than a hundred and six, one seventy.
So, as of, uh, eleven thirty, the balance in that supplemental fund was a hundred and eighty-three thousand, five eighty-six. So, and then the budget for that fund for next year was? So, we only budgeted twenty-eight thousand dollars for next year, uh, that supplemental fund. Um, point being, you may, you probably gonna have enough to, theoretically, you might have enough to cover that significant offset.
Right, and the attorney fees, I mean, this is the first time I've ever had to appropriate money, I've transferred around to get money into a turn, that attorney fee line. It's the first time since I've been here that I've had to appropriate, uh, into attorney fees. So, I would hope that, you know, next year will calm back down, and I will have enough money in my budget for attorney fees. And that won't be an issue.
So, you got approval for next year, but this thirty-four K could not be moved. You got the tw- you've got twenty-five coming out of supplemental for all the jurors right now.
Correct.
Will they let you pull that thirty-four, since they gave you the approval, into that number then?
I, I will, they're gonna have to, I mean.
Forgiveness?
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're gonna have to, and I told our, the operating director, the director of operations that I had, and she said, well, that's fine, but if you're gonna, you know, use a big portion of your supplemental for insurance or attorney fees next year, you know, you can do that once.
Probably not gonna be able to appropriate it out there, and increase it here, having advertised.
Right, we can't do it for this year, but I have permission to do it for next year.
Do we have any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Camps.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
And I will email you all the comprehensive plan and what we're allowed to spend our supplemental funds on.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Oops, sorry.
Moving out of County General. Eighty ninety-nine prosecutor PCA, two twenty operating supplies, five thousand four hundred for a total of five thousand four hundred.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Getting some chairs, huh?
Yep. Lori Craig-Craft, administrator for the Family Support Division.
You have any questions?
Does this, uh, does this have similar rules to the public defenders, in terms of what you can and can't spend money on?
Um, it's, it's like our incentive fund, it can only be spent for the child support program. And this is our PCA fund, it's the money that we, that comes in for our, um, state arrears cases only, we get a percentage of. It's about fifty, close to fifty thousand dollars in there, I very rarely spend anything out of there, so, but I do have to have council approval on this fund, not the incentive fund, but I do have to have council approval on this.
Sixty-six percent reimbursable.
Sixty-six percent reimbursable, yes.
So, you're purchasing chairs for the office?
Yes.
How about, how many, how long you think they'll last?
I'm purchasing twelve. Yeah.
Balance of eleven thirty.
I don't know how long they'll last, to be honest, I mean, our other ones.
Probably like five, eight years.
Probably, yes.
Balance of the fund as of eleven thirty was fifty-four thousand, two thirty-five. And twelve chairs. Thank you.
All right, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Camps.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. Thank you.
Ninety fifty, Marathon Thermal Imaging Grant Fund, two twenty operating supplies, two thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents for a total of two thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, this is some money from Marathon Gas.
The actual grant, thirty-one hundred dollars, so we're not quite using all of it.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Camps.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eleven twenty-seven, Visitor Bureau Convention and Tourism, three eleven contractual services, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents, for a total of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Uh, doing pretty well on your interest, huh?
Yeah, we are.
Simply just asking for that interest money to be moved into contractual services.
Correct. That's all that is, that's all interest money? Wow, that's great. So, that you guys are probably benefiting from the same thing of, of what our, um, uh, treasurers benefit from, the high, this isn't normal, right, the high interest rates?
So, we, we just started in the Hoosier Fund in twenty twenty-two, um, before, and we're just in a savings account, missing thirty-fourth year, so we invested in the Hoosier Funds, um, all our other just, doing very well.
That's great. So, this just puts it in the cat, you don't have like plans, or do you have plans, you guys have plans for it?
Uh, right now, it's just, it's just the cash flow.
Awesome.
Any additional questions? All right, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Camps.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too. All right. Ninety-one fifteen, Casa Wellness Project, one seventy-five disability insurance, sixty dollars for a total of sixty dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, this is adjusting that insurance issue we keep seeing, right?
Yes.
And do you have any additional questions? Roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Camps.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
And Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Twelve hundred supplemental, public defender, one seventy-three health insurance, twenty-five thousand dollars for a total of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, I have the other more adjusting insurance issues, you have any questions on this?
All right, just a quick one.
Yep.
Might have mentioned this when you were talking a minute ago, and I may not have heard it, but, um, our insurance was on the disability stuff.
Well, remember, this is her health insurance, so she, that she discussed when she was up here for her appropriation.
This is going.
There was an error, right, that you caught?
Two employees went from taking zero insurance to taking full family, and she's just making those reductions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, roll call please.
Well, sorry, real quick, the, the clarity here, Shelley, is that this health insurance was already coming out of the supplemental fund. Right? So, there was some coming out previously?
No, this is money that I've designated, there was supposed to be money coming out previously.
This is the shortage money, though, to that already existing?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right, roll call. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Camps.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
I'd like to read the motion.
Motion to approve financial transfers into mens salary ordinance with like reductions. Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Bill, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Camps.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
And the second motion.
Received the backfilling report. Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Eugene, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Camps.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, so first up, we have the Job Classification Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero sixteen, this was, the second reading was tabled last month.
What's the number, twenty, uh, dash, oh sixteen?
Oh sixteen, yep. We'd like to take this off the table.
Um, I make a motion to take it off the table.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Eugene, to remove from the table.
Uh, my first comment on this is.
Oh, we have to roll call.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Camps.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Open the gun, page two, or actually, it's listed as page two, but it's from the page three of this. Delaware County Job Classification Compensation Committee, we had discussed, uh, one, adding a commissioner to that committee, and two, potentially adding a public member. Um, at a minimum, that public member would be an ex aficionado non-voting person. Um, I guess the commissioner would be as well theoretically. Um, so, I would, I suggest that we add to the second paragraph, where it says, the county auditor and county human resources director shall serve, that we add, um, the county auditor, comma, a county commissioner.
You want that community member to have HR experience.
Yeah, so maybe we, um, maybe we add it as a second line there. Should this be a community member or a county employee? No, it should not be a county employee, because of the HR function. Um, we had discussed, I guess, a couple different times in various capacities about a, a public member and HR, um, person, almost like one of our other committees, adding a person like that year over year, that has, uh, experience in that arena, to just be able to weigh in from the outside on, um, on matters that, you know, that we're gonna be maintaining. Um, I'm all for that, um, but I'm open to anybody who may be in disagreement for that.
I like the idea of that, that community member having HR experience, I just think, like, today, the perfect example with the, the comp time, just having someone besides, someone with outside exposure who's around some of the more current policies that are in place, that maybe we're behind on.
That's, that's a good point.
That are out amongst other companies and organizations.
So, what if we're unable to find that person? Well, they're gonna be a non-voting member, so theoretically, we can do the work without them.
Correct. You're adding this into the Job Classification Compensation Committee?
Yes.
Correct, second paragraph, second sentence, adding in a county commissioner, and a member of the public with human resources.
Do the commissioners designate who, who that person will be, their person's?
It's one of them, it's a com- an actual sitting commissioner, is what you're saying.
Right.
Not a representative, it's.
Right, you mean the public person?
No, the commissioner.
Oh, yeah.
Do we pick a commissioner, or do they send us one?
Well, I mean, we gotta have their cooperation, right?
Yeah, so I think they'll have to send us one, do we need to add? I agree. Needs to be clearly defined in there, yes.
Yeah, so the commissioners will select their representative.
Appointed by the commissioner, however.
Yeah, appointed by the commissioners. And then council will appoint the HR representative, uh, outside HR representative. Is that your intent?
Mm-hmm. That's a motion.
Second.
Okay, so, a motion to add this was by Matt with a second from Bill, roll call on this amendment, or addition.
This is just a vote on the addition.
Just the addition, yep. This particular amendment. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Camps.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right.
So, just to be clear, I have that, now reading, the county auditor, the county human resources director, a county commissioner, as appointed by the county commissioners, and a member of the public, as appointed by the county council, shall serve as ex officio non-voting members.
Member from the public with HR, if you wanted.
A human resources experience. You want that?
Yeah.
To actually read that in there?
Yeah.
Yep.
You want it clear.
While he's doing that, I think on page three, there's a blank, that we need to fill in.
Which, um, the proposals for reorganization of the department, was that in the report? So, then on page five, the proposal for reorganization of an apartment, so, if an apartment head or elected official wanted to completely revamp how their office, um, operates, I'll, I'll use the latest example, auditor's office, if you like, switch some things up to, to, use your words, bring us into, you know, twenty-first century. According to this, that has to be approved through this committee.
Yeah, any changes to jobs?
Proposal or reorganization must be filed with the county job class.
Proposal or reorganization must be filed with the county job classification committee. I mean, I think that's a great idea.
Right.
Yeah, I do think that
I don't remember hearing about it before, that's why I asked if it was added, I like it.
Think it was in there, but the, um, to me, the idea is that brings it to the table for, you know, review or discussion and input.
Look at any bugs that
Yeah.
Put more eyes on it.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
All right, so back to page three, we have the blank.
Well, I'm not understanding, where you mean, oh, I see what you're saying. Such requests shall be made prior to.
So following the installation of the new job classification, it says, some elected officials in departments will be provided information on making job reviews and new position requests for committee review. Such requests shall be made prior to the, the, uh, salary ordinance is enforced.
Would that be before our budget meeting? Know what that means?
Well, I think it would need to be before they submit their budget request.
It would have to be before June, then, right?
Prior to the
June month?
The deadline, yeah, so June first.
That makes sense to me.
We need to make that a motion.
Because it's the blank on page three.
Yeah.
Motion to amend that to be prior to June first of each calendar year, second.
All right, um, motion for this amendment was made by Matt, second by Ryan, roll call on the amendment to make this prior to June first of each calendar year. Fill that in real quick, please.
Yep.
Relative to, um, oh, you're
We're gonna do the roll call, though. And, I'm sorry. It was made by Matt and second by Ryan, yes. Mr. Flanagan? Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mr. Cant?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Relative to the rest of it, while there, I'm, I'm, there may be some areas to review, I think that getting this approved and then turning this over basically to that committee is the next, is logical in lieu of trying to maybe, in lieu of trying to fine tune every line here.
Don't, go see where the pain points are and then be able to communicate that back to this body if revisions need to be made.
Anybody else have feedback on that?
Well, for me personally, there are plenty of things in here that I don't really agree with, but I think I've kind of got to the point where there's probably more in here that I do agree with than I disagree with. And although I will, personal, a personal, uh, wish would that it would all, you know, be tied up with a red bow, ready to go, but that's just not realistic, it's not gonna happen, so.
This is
You guys have put a lot of work into this.
Yeah, and so then, this, this is, um, again, back to the conversation about what Jessica inputted into the system. You know, this was the second piece of the classification study that we need to approve, so we can get that all moving down the road. And the auditor's office is still working to clean up some errors that they've found based off my conversation yesterday with them. Errors on roughly forty-eight, fifty lines that didn't match up number-wise from what you and Jessica turned into them as they were going through. What's she referring to, Tanya?
Um, this was
That was the original submission that we sent?
What you said?
The first spreadsheet we sent?
No, uh, the latest one that came through over the weekend, or Friday evening, or
Yeah, the employee list.
I believe that is what you and Ed spoke on.
Correct.
And, yeah, there are some lines that we looked at.
The line IDs are not properly matching up, okay. And then that gets compared to what Pam had, which hers is probably more likely, no, this was the budget book line items. Hers was the one that she manually keeps, which currently
Yes.
Yeah, we just need to cross-reference that.
Take his, compare it to yours.
You run that script on that file, is that how you figured that out?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
I
Well, you didn't physically, but I mean, somebody ran, Ed said there was a script they could run to identify if they were
I would say he did that.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question.
Yep.
If we pass it today, is it becoming effective today, or is it becoming effective January one?
I understand it was January one.
Right, well, then we need to fill in the blanks on page one. And whether that's
There are blanks there.
A amendment or not? No, sorry.
All right.
So was that January first?
Second.
That's right, because that's the date of the reorganization.
Yeah, right. I already updated it.
Okay, so this needs to be, who's made the motion for this update?
Ryan.
Motion made by Ryan, and that will, that'll be the second. Eugene was second. All right, uh, roll call on the update on this first paragraph. All right, Mr. Flanagan? Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mr. Cant?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
If I could just ask one quick point of clarification. I know previously, there had been some employees that had shared concerns. I haven't been contacted by anyone in the last month. My question is, all the members from the council, have you guys heard from any employees who are still not, you know?
I haven't heard of nothing.
That's me, neither have I, so I'm assuming we got all the bugs worked out that people were concerned about.
At least since our last meeting, when it was mentioned to today.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Since we now pass, I do have our
We haven't passed it yet.
Okay, I'll wait.
All right, so do we have any additional amendments or changes?
With approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four fifteen as amended.
Second. Gene, second.
Okay, so the motion to approve twenty twenty-four dash zero sixteen as amended came from Bill with a second by Eugene. Roll call, please. Mr. Flanagan? Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mr. Cant?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Quite an information act, should our legal counsel contact Wagner and Keely about their copyright statement? Making sure that we're not violating at the bottom of each page.
Yeah. I also want to quickly, um, address the FLSA ruling. Um, for those that may or may not know, um, judge in Texas, um, basically eliminated the FLSA, um, requirement thresholds for salary and what it pertains to overtime, um, as of the fifteenth of November is my understanding. And so that, they've gone back to the twenty nineteen thresholds, whereas in July first, there was supposed to be a threshold of fifty-eight thousand dollars, or thereabouts, fifty-eight, eight, I think it was. That goes back to the thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars. So the current FLSA threshold per overtime requirement is a salary of thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
All right, thank you, uh, now, you have something?
I have two questions.
Okay.
First, and this sort of piggybacks on something that Ryan has said about committees and whether they meet or not meet. I think, we'll need to review this, but I think the committee, HR committee, whatever you wanna call it, needs to be required to meet at least once a year. I don't think it says it specifically in here. And then I also think as a council, this should be reviewed, at least say that we have had it in front of our eyes also once a year. But I will let everybody think about that.
I totally agree, and as a fact, I was actually gonna suggest, um, we, we set a meeting schedule for this committee of firm dates, so people, whoever is on it has that calendarized for the year, preferably. We had kind of discussed, you know, you know, finance is the only real committee that's formalized at this point, time-wise, so perhaps there's an adjustment there, but, um, or perhaps that's, but similar to that. Um, and maybe next month, we could try to firm that up. Yep.
While we talk about it, reorganization, and figure out who's going to actually serve.
That's true, that's true, yep. Give me a review.
I guess, is that a committee then, an appointment that we have to advertise for at least two months and let people?
No, that's internal, right?
Okay.
Oh, you mean for the HR?
For, for the community member.
We can add, add it to this list, just, and then if it, if it don't go through.
Do it again.
Yeah, just to cover your bases, it wouldn't hurt for when we make our advertisement for the board appointments that we're gonna do next month, we could include that one.
Oh, yeah, we had another one pop up that I'll discuss here in a minute anyway, so that's a good call out, thank you, Gene. All right, up next is the encumbrance ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two five, this would be its second reading. I know we've had some conversations, we had, um, lots of comments at our last meeting. And then Matt and I, we met with, uh, Tanya and Ed, had some more conversation on it on Thursday.
Yeah, so, um, well, do we need, is this on the table, what do we have?
It's just a second reading, so do we have to
Be a motion to adopt, and then you'd have discussion.
All right, do I have any emotion to adopt before discussion?
Is anyone opposed to?
No motion is opposing.
Um, given where we are from, missing people, I'll make a motion to, uh, to adopt the, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four, oh, twenty-five.
For purposes of discussion, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Matt, second by Bill, now we can discuss. Hey, Matt, you wanna?
So again, this is back to my, uh, our detailed conversation with, uh, with Ed, uh, and Tanya after finance, um, I talked to him again on Friday, like I mentioned. And my understanding is that the financial system that we have and the regulations from the state, the ODF and, and SBOA, indicate that any encumbrance added to the system after December thirty-first, in the current fiscal year, cannot be added after that date. Physic, is that correct, Tanya? Yes. So unlike in the corporate world where you could have an expense in the previous fiscal year, adjust your books to take into account sometime in January, prior to probably paying taxes or doing whatever you're doing, that apparently is not how it operates here, and, um, I was not aware of that initially. The purpose of my request relative to encumbrances from last year was that we received a sheet with a bunch of line item numbers and the actual dollar amounts, but zero detail on what they were for. I was provided from Tanya, an example of one, when we met on Tuesday, or Thursday, which shows all the detail that gets submitted and requested, and she said we will be getting that for this year. However, I do think that it warrants the idea of having sort of a deadline established where encumbrances, if at all possible, can be submitted prior to that thirty-first date, or in advance of that thirty-first date, knowing that there's holidays and time off, and people are trying to close the books for the year, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the way it reads in, in number one, is basically trying to do it before finance. Number two indicates that none will be considered or encumbered. I had originally requested that that be removed, um, from this ordinance, because I do think it's a hard and fast no, which may or may not be the case. We know that, at a minimum, and Ben looked into this for us, December thirty-first is the state language that they put, that everything has to be submitted by December thirty-first. We have the authority, so to speak, to try to move that up if we want to. But I would also leave it a little bit open-ended, so that there's no, you know, we try to get everything in by that Monday before finance, but it doesn't, um, prevent us from doing any last-minute versions of it, if I'm saying that right. That's where, that's where this, that's where this sits. So, feedback on the idea of it, I know there's been some feedback from department heads, concern from department heads, which I'm happy to, to hear. But my first recommendation is that we remove number two on the, uh, in the encumbrance, uh, ordinance there.
And if we remove line two, basically what you're asking is, for all the department heads, or any submissions for encumbrances, is please submit them to the date requested, but then after that date, we will still take encumbrances up to the thirty-first as the state law is currently says.
That was my initial
Okay.
And I see the conflict, so yes.
Yeah, so I mean, basically, this isn't gonna do a whole lot besides
It's a recommendation, almost.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, everything you're saying is kind of why I don't even think we need this ordinance, I think that, um, I think we could follow the law that says you're allowed to have it up to the thirty-first, but everybody can have a, uh, professional courtesy of understanding of, hey, guys, even though the law says the thirty-first, let's try to have a hard line here, and, 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 and again, it's just a, a date of understanding. That'll eliminate ninety-nine percent of it, there may be one or two that, for whatever reason, out of people's control, gets past that date, and we can deal with that, the auditor's office can deal with that. I think when you create an ordinance surrounding it, um, it, it's gonna cause more problems than it's gonna solve, I think.
One other point
To give us a little
So if, if this were adopted, and it were hard and fast, that done by that date, would be become an creation in twenty twenty-five, or the next fiscal year, which I'm not directly opposed to, I know it department heads are not necessarily for that. It does bring those appropriations back to finance, it rolls over the funds into, um, county general at the end of the year, they have to come back and appropriate that money to pay those remaining balances. Little more work, I feel like, but it's not
I would agree with you, and there's the potential then of those departments spending that money and then saying, oh, my encumbrance is larger than what I had in my budget for the prior year, I need more appropriated to cover these. But also, Ryan, to your point, I mean, yes, most departments should know what their expenses are gonna be throughout that month. However, they may not know the exact dollar amount. There may be things that come up that break, and they need to spend money on. And to say, December tenth, or twelfth, or whatever date it is prior to the finance committee meeting, they have to have these submitted, to me right now, you're not gonna talk me into thinking this is a good idea.
I'm with you. Yeah, we're on the same page.
All right, so
We need to sit down and come up with, with something better.
Okay.
And I think trying to push it through for this year isn't gonna work.
Well, in addition to that, the feedback I've gotten from the, from the, from the people, the soldiers in the field, the department heads, I've not really had anyone who's shown me any level of support for it. I've heard plenty of objections, but I, I mean, there may be some out there, but I've not heard it.
Could we let, uh, Tanya weigh in from the auditor's perspective, and then let department heads speak?
Um, really, my understanding was that this is more for the council, and then anything else as far as having a good understanding at the end of the year, what you're looking at encumbering, so that you have a better idea of exactly where your ending balance is going to be, that sort of thing. Um, because we have the, um, December meetings earlier than normal due to the holidays, um, that, of course, bumps it up as far as having it prior to a finance meeting. Um, along Um along with that, does it give the auditor's office a little bit more um huh? Got time to do all this stuff by the end of the month? Yes, it does. You know what I mean? If we already have those in place and and Kita's the one that does our encumbrances. So anyways, we we implemented this um way of doing the encumbrances because it was recommended by State Board of Accounts um to use this part of our financial system if we had it available. So therefore, we do have this available to where it's actually treated as a true encumbrance, rather than beforehand how it was being added to the budget at twenty twenty five, like say we're in twenty twenty five. The encumbrance money got added to the budget and there it looks like you have more than you really do, when in fact it was encumbrances. Um this uh will allow it to read properly, I guess. It it's not that it was um against State Board of Accounts, it's not, you know, some financial systems may not have that capability of doing that, and that's like the only way to go about it, but we ours does. So therefore, State Board of Accounts recommended that we use that source. In order to use that new source, that was something we're gonna be doing for the first time this year. So um with that and everything else at the end of the year, I can say it's very helpful, the sooner the better. But like anything in life, the sooner the better as far as when you're trying to prepare, plan, et cetera. Um that's where we're coming from on it, from from your guys' aspect of it, it was more of like a a truer understanding of where you're at at the end of the year, and so it was um.
If something doesn't get encumbered this year, regardless of this ordinance, if something doesn't get encumbered or act inputted into the system prior to the end of the year, for whatever reason.
It would be appropriation in the new year.
Still, the process is gonna be the same.
I mean, I will add to it that, you know, she will not only be, we have to uh balance with the treasures at the last day of the year. So her her Kita's head bookkeeper, I should say, head bookkeeper's job is to um do that. Be in balance with treasures. I mean, we stay until it's done sort of thing. Um anything that that goes into doing that, which sometimes can be easy breezing, sometimes can be, you know, gotta find this or whatnot. Um then she also has to close out the book. She also will now have to do encumbrances on that day. You know what I'm saying? So it just adds to the workload for one day.
Just real fast, how many employees are in the auditor's office?
Um fourteen overall.
Thank you.
Fred? I would respectfully request that you do not adopt this. Um I think it puts an undue burden on department heads. I I wish we had had this discussion prior to today. Um again, as I said earlier, it this was something that was introduced to the last council meeting that none of the department heads had any idea or input on.
Explain an undue burden.
Because I don't feel that it's right if I spend money in two thousand twenty four that I then have to go through the appropriation process to get money approved, pay for it. I I I'm all about a hard and fast day. Let let me finish. I'm I'm all about a hard and fast date. Say you say it's the twenty seventh, whatever it is, and then only emergencies after that, that gives them a few days. What I'm saying to you is if I get a bill for twenty thousand dollars on December twenty first, under the way this is written, or however you decide to do it, and it doesn't get appropriated for some reason, I then have to come to a finance meeting and the council to appropriate money, which is a wasted step. When there's already a system in place that allows us to spend twenty twenty four dollars to December thirty first. I'm also the first one to tell you that I don't think December thirty first is probably an accurate date because of the workload that it's gonna put on them. But the other side note to that is, department heads should be doing some forethought and planning to not dump a hundred appropriation requests on somebody on December thirty first. I don't I don't find that to be like like unreasonable, right? I think I think there have been issues in in years past um with appropriations or with encumbrances. Um you know, our encumbrances didn't come out of our accounts this year, I don't think, until like March, so. I I get it that it that it's a time time thing, but I also believe that the state law is written the way that it is, so that we don't have to go through a process to spend money from twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, whether that's an appropriation request, whatever the case may be. So I would strongly urge that you guys just vote this down and then maybe have some communication between department heads, the auditor's office, the council, whoever, and sit down and come up with something that makes sense from year to year. Cause this was not something that any of, I don't think any of us were prepared to like, that that was coming down the pike, so.
Yeah, and I I heard that because um and since I'm the one talking about communication, I should we should have done that much uh, we should have improved that, no two ways about it. The encumbrance module, though, as part of the financial system, was approved back in July, so that is new. Um how they're entering for this year, it's gonna be different.
And I get that, but but you know, long about August, September, maybe we should have started this conversation, right? Like like.
Sure.
It didn't even come before us until September, October. We were still, we were still in budget season.
Bygones.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Point taken. Emily?
So I just wanna say, coming from this side, it would hinder us, and I agree with him. Although I come from the auditor's side, just seeing the workload that's put on Kita with all the stuff that's under her hat, I understand the need to move that date up. I think that it just kind of puts hardship on us when we have to have an invoice in order to turn in a claim. And sometimes at the end of the year, that's what we're waiting on. We know this bill is coming, we know it's gonna be due, and we have it built into our budget, and we can't give you that bill until we have the invoice, but we can't take it out of twenty five budget, so that that is where the problem lies. Again, I don't turn in fifty encumbrances, it's usually one or two. Um but I do see both sides of the coin, and I want the auditor's office to understand that, coming from me especially. I totally understand their workload, I know what they go through, I work with them on a daily basis, I work with them personally, and I feel like they're getting thrown under the bus a lot. Um and I do, I do feel for them, and I just wanna stick up for them a little bit.
So the last year.
Yeah.
Last year, there was roughly two hundred and more than two hundred encumbrances on this list.
And and so I say, but our cutoff day was like early in the month, so a lot of us had things that came after that, but I'm saying towards the end of the month, I'm not turning things in on the twenty seventh, twenty eighth, twenty ninth. Mine's coming at the fifteenth usually, so she is getting encumbrances, absolutely. But they're not on the eight, at least for me, they're not on the twenty seventh, twenty eighth, twenty ninth, thirtieth. It's usually because that cutoff's well before that. And so I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer is, I don't have the answer, I'm not here to solve that problem. I'm here to say that I see both sides of the coin. I see the auditor's issue with manpower and getting those put in and having to close books, but I also see a department head's side of saying, you can't cut off our funding, you know, because it's filled into our budget.
May I comment on that? Uh I would just like to point out that I do understand, like, we all have to deal with all the state laws. You know, you have to have an invoice, you have to have this, you have to have that. So I I do get that burden sometimes when you're like waiting on the official documents to to make it official. Um however, if you have placed an order, I would just like to say that if you've placed an order, you know your invoice is going to be coming. That is something that they can bring to finance if you've ordered, you know, if you order it prior to the meeting. That is, even though you don't have the official paperwork for it to be a an encumbrance, it's still something that can be brought to the table saying, hey, I'm going to be encumbering.
I mean, I I know they've worked with me on where I had a bill, and I'm like, I have to have this check check cut, but all I have is this receipt. I don't have an actual invoice, and they've worked with me on things like that. So I know things have been worked out. Again, I think it's about communication. I think it's about two way and and putting that out there and seeing what can and can't be done. I think every situation can be a case by case basis. But um I just wanna say, like, thank you to the auditor, they've always worked with me very much on a personal level. And I've had lots of corrections this year, and I've worked with Kita on a lot of that. Um but I just feel like we're all human and some grace needs to be given, and that it's been a sucky year for a lot of people. And I just feel like there's just a lot of hate, and I don't, I don't know, it's just kind of sucky.
Let me speak to that for a second, cause I think that's an important thing, a distinction that needs to be met. Pointing out issues for accountability should never be classified as hate. Well, there's only one way to bring it out, and that's direct, straightforward and honest. That's the only way I operate. I'm not gonna beat around the bush with it. And I think with what we're discussing with this particular issue plays into that. What we're talking about with this ordinance treats a symptom, right? It treats a symptom, but it doesn't treat the problem. Part of the symptom is, we don't wanna dump a bunch of work unduly, right? Which again, I think can be corrected with some good professional courtesy and communication. There may be a couple that have to go through, but good, good quality communication will fix most of this. But this ordinance is is trying to fix the symptom, not the problem. And and what I'm getting at is the reason I asked the number about employees, fourteen, just in this backfill report, there's three employees in the last month that have been swapped out in that office. That's twenty percent in one month, right? This ordinance is the symptom. The turnover is the problem, okay? And we have one very, very critical office that has repeated turnover issues. You could make all the ordinances in the world you want to try to ease the burden, it it it. We gotta be able to maintain employees that we have, and we gotta be able to keep the employees that we have. Things happen, people leave, I get it. But at some point, we gotta be accountable for our own actions and how we run our departments and what what follows from that. And unfortunately, this is part of the fallout. And I say that completely, unhatefully.
I I would suggest that maybe like after the first of the, if we're gonna, it seems like we're gonna vote this down, so um that we maybe after finance or we pull together the finance committee with the auditor's office and or a handful of department folks and see if there is change needed. Because I'm not, I'm not even sure based on what I'm hearing that there is, I'm not positive of what.
Maybe just a friendly reminder every November that get your encumbrances in as quickly as possible, alright, like. Maybe it's just that simple as a please, please. Let's all work together and and help each other out here, because things do get chaotic at the end of the year. Alright, well, roll call on the uh encumbrance ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero two five. Mister Flanagan, Mister Hughes.
No.
Mister Mokel. Mister Webb.
No.
Mister Whitehead.
No.
Mister Cantz.
Yes.
Miss Piper, no. Alright, moving on to our public safety experience pay ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero two six, and it's second reading. Would be a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Ryan, second by Bill.
A note that uh it has been renumbered as uh twenty twenty four dash twenty one.
Oh, okay.
It is the same.
This sheriff's deputy, right?
Is that right?
Twenty six is the correct number, is what I'm being told.
It should be twenty six. Never mind.
It's just a warm and clarify, what we passed for first reading had a different number.
I changed the agenda for, and I changed the numbers on the on my ordinance. And it was changed last time out there as well.
But what he's saying.
What I, I think the issue is what I sent out electronically had the wrong number in it, which she caught prior to the last meeting and updated it before that meeting. And we've, we've worked out a system to make sure that doesn't happen anymore.
Twenty six.
Okay, thank you.
Now we need to we have a a different version than the version that was introduced. Been circulated, was at our place and available to the public. I would move to substitute the version that is before us today for the version that we introduced last time. My way of amendment. Say that again.
Thanks for the moving as, like, that's what we have in front of us, is the amended document. So he's moving as amended.
So if you recall, though I wasn't here, I was watching online, there were, there was a lot of substantive discussion on this last month. Um there was feedback from, I believe, the sheriff's department on some of the numbers and figures in here. Based on all of that feedback, I went back in and updated those figures and numbers in the version that's in your folder today. So to Bill's point, the first, this is different from the first reading, so you could adopt it as an amendment to the original. Yeah, it's been amended. The version in front of you has been amended, so you'll need a motion.
Bill made the motion for this doc, this document in our hands as amended. Okay, Ryan, you're seconding. Roll call on the uh use of this amended document. Roll call. Oh, sorry. What are we roll calling? Just so I know I'm on the right thing.
Amendment read as it is in front of it today.
Alright, I'm on the read, okay. Mister Flanagan. Mister Hughes.
Yes.
Mister Mokel. Mister Webb.
Yes.
Mister Whitehead.
Yes.
Mister Cantz.
Yes.
Miss Piper, yes.
I'll move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four, twenty six as amended.
We have a mo- motion to adopt as amended. Now discussion? Do we have anything else?
Everyone good? I've got, I've got quite a few questions.
Uh I've got, I've got quite a few. And I guess my first question I'll just start off with is, the way it reads, it says prior experience may receive, and it says may receive throughout entire document. Is this a shall receive, may receive, who determine, if it's may, who's determining it? I thought this would be shall, because once you acquire the years of experience, it is an automatic.
Yeah, but very, very true. Council still has to prove it each time, right?
Right.
So it it may get approved every year, but within this, is it may or shall? Because you're saying if it's approved, it shall. The way I read it, but I I'm not a lawyer, and I, my question really is to Ben on this one.
You're saying, wait, wait, it sounds like the sheriff has a lot of discrepancy.
If it says may. For whomever's determining this, but yes. So I just, I want a clarification from a lawyer's perspective.
Yeah, I would agree. The the word may does imply discretion. If it's not your intent to allow for discretion subject to your annual budgeting, then I would agree with you, it should be changed to shall. But again, it it, as it even says in here, requires this, this may be in full force and effect for January, as of January first twenty five, but it would still then have to be updated for twenty six.
Annually.
Annually, the whole thing, correct.
To your point, if if you would like it to be uh a requirement rather than an option, then shall is a much stronger word than may.
Like, my personal opinion of that is, I think this is something we should defer to the sheriff on. This is his, his guideline, you know, he's the one, may have somebody who does nothing, but yet they, you know, they have the years in, but they go park, not saying anyone does that, but they will park and, you know, let the time pass, and he knows that better than any of us. And not everyone maybe is uh.
Ryan, turn and ask your question.
What's that?
He's right.
No, I'm saying I think it should be just discretion for this.
You, so you like may, where it is up to the discretion of the sheriff to determine, not just the years of experience that determines.
Yeah, in my opinion, ninety nine percent of this, the time would be exactly this, but I would like to give him that authority to make.
Let me play devil's advocate, I'm not saying Sheriff Skinner would ever do this. But if for some reason he was disappointed or disliked a deputy and decided, I don't like you, I'm not gonna give you that. Is that appropriate way to be handling this, a? Is that appropriate way to be handling this pay experience, whatever you want to call it?
I don't think it's appropriate, but I think it's a factor that everybody knows with in regular.
Then we should take that decision away from the sheriff, because if it is truly experience related, then it shouldn't matter. Uh, hopefully they don't have bad deputies, but good, bad, or indifferent. If your experience level is reached, that's the way that is written, and it's the way it's, uh, we're changing this to go away from purely, uh, the base salaries.
Sure, it's not a hill I'm gonna die on, I'm just saying.
True, and.
I think all of us.
Neither am I, but I got a lot of questions about this, so this is just one, and I don't want to drag them all out this long.
I, I think this is an, uh, Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff, I think this is an experience matrix and not a performance matrix, so I, I agree with you.
Shall, shall it is. Okay. Do you have a copy of this in front of you, Sheriff?
I have a copy of the one that was out in the hallway, yeah.
Okay, at the very bottom of yours, it has on line D, twenty to twenty-five years, and four thousand, and then twenty-six plus is five?
Right.
At our last meeting, you said twenty to twenty-four is four, and then twenty-five plus is five. Could you clarify which is correct?
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting, the one we turned in for, the one we turned in for, um.
My apologies, you're representative then, my, my apologies. I just need a clarification, please.
Is what you just asked about. We maxed at twenty, twenty-five years and six thousand dollars of twenty-five years, that is what.
We maxed at twenty-four. We, the one we turned in for was, was an increase every four years.
Yes.
Maxing at twenty-four years. That's the one we turned, that we requested at budget time.
Completed twenty-four, so twenty-five plus.
Correct.
Correct.
And what I have written down from last meeting is zero to four is zero, five to nine is one, ten to fourteen is two, fifteen to nineteen is three, twenty to twenty-four is four, and twenty-five plus is five. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so what we have in front of us is not correct.
Just twenty to twenty-four and then twenty-five plus, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Correct.
I, I also, on that.
Can I add them all up as one? Can't we make these amendments all at the same time?
Yeah, that, I sure would like to do that, Bill, if that's possible.
Anything you want.
Thanks.
Can I make one more point on that?
Yeah.
Please.
Hang, hang on, this is still different than what we requested at budget time, because ours was every four years, all the way up to twenty-four, which would be a maximum of six thousand dollars, capped at six. So we had, we had six different levels, not five. That's what we requested, I know it's been changed.
Well, in both cases, there was nothing between zero and four years, it was zero.
Right.
Okay.
You have to, you have to complete four years before you're even eligible.
Okay, at five, that's what it reads. And at ten, and at fifteen, at twenty, and at twenty-five.
Yeah, I don't think you have to put any difference.
That's only five levels, it was six, it becomes zero as a level. Well, zero should be a level.
Yes.
And it should be in here, in my, my opinion, that way it's clear.
But it doesn't pay anything.
Doesn't pay anything, so why would you identify? Just to make it clear, so you, so you know that it's zero, and then there's no, there's a starting point. But like I said, that's very small potatoes.
Right.
I mean, if you don't want to add it there, I'm not going to argue with that, that's very minute really, and. Beyond that. And beyond that, I'm gonna have.
I want to have it all right there in front, so whoever fixed it up knows exactly what it's supposed to be. Zero to four is a level, nothing at zero.
We're already going to make an amendment, so it don't hurt to put it in and add it.
Well, uh, uh, if, if we're doing that, then, then I, I don't understand why there's difference in, in years. So the first one, in, in order to be eligible for it, you have to, you have to have served four years, okay? But the next threshold is five years, the next one is five, the next one is five, and then down on D, you have to, you have to serve six years before you get the next one.
Changing that to twenty-four, twenty to twenty-four. Particularly, we're already changing that.
Good.
And then make it twenty-five plus after, and then E would be twenty-five or more.
Gotcha.
Next you got, Eugene.
Well, sorry, I didn't get my point in yet, which was simply, I don't believe that there needs to be two of these. I think that the nine-one-one should match the sheriff, so that there's continuity. This is, cause we initially had this framed under a public safety experience pay. If nine-one-one falls under that, I'm not sure why we have to have one different. Because in essence, then it shortens for Fred's folks, he would shorten it a little bit in some of these areas, but it would put it on the same path.
After speaking to the sheriff, I'm in agreement that we should be on it. We did, we talked about this prior to today, so.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was the, the deal from the beginning, is that they would both be the same, and based on this, they're not the same. Not even close, or close, but they're not.
So I'm in agreement that we should follow his as well. It just may, it's cleaner and it makes it easier, so. It, it does. Because trying to maintain two separate plans at, at budget time, depending on if the council changes and everything else, you have to explain this fourteen times every year, so.
I've got that too, but if, if we do what Matt and Fred are talking about, then that has, that goes out the window, because then everybody is on the sheriff's. So if we, yeah, so. So, and I understand Fred's point.
Did we budget for that?
That's what I just said.
We haven't budgeted, we haven't budgeted for anything yet, because after this is approved, we have to give you an appropriation request into whatever line the auditor's office creates for each department.
That's right.
And, and, and appropriate the money into it, so.
Well, we did do a guesstimate when we were doing our final budget, so it, 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 while you're correct in that it's not like official, we did have our.
It's included but not budgeted.
Right.
This is the trust this money that we were talking about earlier in January.
I mean, let's go back to Matt's point. Are we wanting to consolidate? Because if we are, then my next question is moot. So I think it should be consolidated, I think, without question. So everything in this first lower section on the first page becomes the, in totality, removing section B altogether. And just add nine-one-one employees, or whatever the language is, uh, nine-one-one employees into this. Yeah, that makes sense, if everyone's in.
So you say sheriff.
I'm sure everyone, including nine-one-one director, is in agreement with that, because that then adds extra dollars to his employees, especially if they reach certain levels.
Yep.
Which is again, the point of this in the first.
They've got that much experience, I'm okay with that. It takes, it makes it clear. Mr. Cummings, while you're still there, I have a question on what I consider communications technicians versus your salaried supervisors.
They are not eligible for this, as it currently stands.
Alright, as it currently stands.
Correct.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Freeman, does it need to specifically state that in there? That the supervisors don't qualify for this? Or do we just put nine-one-one communication technicians? However, however it needs to be clearly defined, that is my question. The, the difference is, the employees that fall under this are hourly versus your salary.
Yeah.
Now, Ms. Mokel did ask, at budget time, paraphrasing, but basically, he, he feels that supervisors should be entitled to this as well. And so I will craft a plan for the next budget cycle to address that and present that, but it's not in what is.
I think the supervisors are the ones who would probably fall into this, because their, your supervisors are generally going to be your more experienced people.
No, I have dispatches that have been in twenty-four, twenty-five years.
Well, our, our supervisors on our end certainly fall into it, the only ones that don't are the chief deputy and I and the jail commander. So our, our supervisors most certainly fall into this, mind you not currently.
And that was a question that Jim had asked at budget time. So I will come together for next year with a plan to address that as well.
Hopefully they get it.
So in, in answer to your question, you can probably leave the wording the way that it is. They're just not getting it this year, but it will leave the door open to add that for next year. You're not specific.
Or since you're making the changes, now go ahead and include it for next year.
Right.
I'm wanting to lean on Ben more to answer that question versus. I'm, I'm putting in hourly, to be clear.
Okay, okay, that's fine, and, and I will make that pitch at budget time.
But Fred, excuse me, Fred, Fred did bring up an excellent point of, a fund is going to have to be created. And in discussion with Mr. Hughes, that, that is something that the council can't do, but it needs to be in here, that it's going to be created, so that way, auditors office knows where this money is going to come from.
So there, so there'd be a line created in the sheriff's budget, probably the sheriff lit and nine-one-one, right?
Right, so they're going to be created, but it doesn't say that it's going to be, is that something that?
I don't think that needs to be in the ordinance, because it, it's, it's just a different pay line, so we, we have to submit to VIP.
Lines.
Yeah, where it comes out of.
As needed, is that true? And name it accordingly, Tanya, right?
Um, I would have to look at a different ordinance, I guess, to see if it's in there, but I was thinking that we do have ordinances that specify the line number, um, for them, um.
I think Ed did say though, that this is something new. The way that I understood it was.
Right, it'll be, it'll be a new line, uh, however, like, all three funds will have the same three digits at the end, you know what I mean?
That's what I understood it.
Streamlined numbering system, um, even though it'll be different.
The line number?
I'm sorry.
With the educational pay, does that have the specific pay line here, because this is what the same way, of the educational one?
I, I would have to look at that ordinance, I mean, I don't know what that ordinance reads right off the top of my head to know if the line number is listed on the actual ordinance or if it's not. So, I think it's more, uh, I, I feel like that has more to do with ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road, when a lot of us are no longer here, and somebody's pulling this ordinance like we do now. We pull an ordinance, we're like, what the heck did they mean back then? We don't know, we're trying to interpret it, you know, a lot of times there's not specifics there, um, to just outline it real specifically, uh, in order for the next person to just know exactly, like, where it's coming from, what it is, who gets it, how do you determine who gets it, who, who keeps track of it, you know, that sort of thing, so.
I'll give you a simpler example, so when we do payroll currently, each employee has their own pay line, right? So when you go into VIP, we pay them against that pay line, their overtime comes from a different line, right? It's, it's all set up in VIP, so all this is going to do is, they'll add a different pay line to the employees that need it. It'll all be the same, because it'll be put in a lump sum into this new account, and it will just pull that amount every payroll.
If, if I may like to add to that, considering, um, even though this does not read longevity, per state board of accounts, this is longevity.
That's on my list of things, Tanya.
So with that, I mean, as far as reading a longevity, longevity line, I think it would be, um, a good idea to have it in your wording.
I got confused because we had this longevity, um, issue. We were told that's not longevity, it's not what it is, but. Right, and we ended up pulling it out. After discussion with auditors office, we need to add it in the title of both of these that are going to be before us. So when state board of accounts looks it up, they can find it. So regardless, back to my question of the funds and fund numbers, if that, to add clarification and definition of enough information, so people in the future looking at this, does that need to be in there? And that's a question, I guess, for the auditors office.
I think it's helpful to say that there's going to be a longevity line added in order to pay out of, just because of what we went through at budget time, where we have to have these separate lines for the longevity.
So currently, we have two longevity line items, longevity prorated pay and just straight longevity.
Longevity bonus is what we call it on the.
We call it longevity experience.
That's not what's in here, but that's what it says.
This'll be, we have two more now, so we'll have four.
So.
So then we have longevity experience pay.
That's this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then one being for, uh, nine-one-one sheriff slash jail.
So the, the title of this should be longevity experience pay matrix.
You could, I don't know why we'd need matrix on it, but.
Oh, okay.
Longevity experience pay is what we discussed at the budget hearing.
Alright, I'm just clarifying, thank you, sorry.
And Jim, the wordage of, of, or verbiage, putting that in, as far as the line will be created, I feel like that just helps cover things state board of accounts wise, that's, that's well.
Delaware County Auditor's Office shall establish a new longevity experience pay line within the appropriate budgets for the purposes of handling these payments.
Perfect.
Eugene, keep going. Alright, uh, as far as prior experience, and let, let's start with just the sheriff, a prior experience in law enforcement. I, I think that needs to be defined more in our ordinance, but is that experience with the Delaware County Sheriff's Department? Is that if it's transferred from another, uh, law enforcement agency? Is that if they're in security, i- is there a certain education level that you're calling starts their law enforcement timeframe?
In my mind, in my mind, it's always been with this agency.
Okay.
And I concur with that.
Okay, and I think that needs to be clearly defined in here. We had awareness as opposed to like defining experience. And this is where, I'm using you, Fred, as an example, you've had lateral transfers.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody's got five years' experience somewhere else. So if they move in, they're starting at day zero.
That is correct.
For this ordinance.
Only for lateral transfer stuff, it's not, it's not.
Okay.
I envision this to be years of experience in Delaware County.
And I, and I think that needs to be clearly defined in this ordinance.
I agree.
Alright, so, shall be entitled to receive additional compensation based on their years of experience.
As employees of Delaware County.
And now humor me with this question, Mr. Sheriff, if they're a correctional officer, what does it take for them to become a deputy, or vice versa? And is that continuing on in their years of experience?
I, I would, I would think that because they're already accumulating time here, the, the transfer is simple. If they go from a correctional officer to a merit deputy, they're on exactly the same experience pay matrix. So I think that that should count.
Okay.
Yeah, but if, well, and, and honestly, the same thing, if, if we hire a dispatcher, they're already accumulating it there. So as long as it's any of these three, um, components or agencies, then they can, they can transfer that seniority for the purpose of this extra pay, yes. But anybody outside of these three entities would have to start at day one.
Alright, so I appreciate that, now I gotta figure out if that's the way the council thinks of it as well.
I would agree with that.
We do that with, we do that with time off, like I hired somebody from the jail, she got credit for her years of service with Delaware County when it came to vacation and everything.
That's why I said, forgive me for the question, because I didn't know if the training is different, that it would start you over at zero. I mean, I know there's different training for all three positions, so appreciate that, thank you. And I don't know what, what is the council, I got a couple of head nods. Thank you. I might agree with you. Alright, as far as when the timeframe starts for day zero, and then accumulates to a year, it doesn't specifically say in here whether that's three hundred and sixty-five days of service, or if I started the day and I got to December thirty-first, if January one then is my completed first year. And I know you're shaking your head, and I hope.
It's your anniversary day when you're hired.
I think that needs to be stated clearly in here.
So like, the way I see this is if somebody's hired on December twenty-four, then, um, they still have to complete four years before that next January first, so they get a much, they get a lot more of a benefit than somebody that's hired on January third. So if you're hired on January third, you literally have to put in four years, six hundred and, and, or three hundred and sixty-two days before you get that first bonus, so, um, but, but, yeah, it's anniversary day.
Everything, everything is already based around that, the uniform, uh, the allowance they get, their vacation days.
Longevity previously was not calculated that way. And I want to make sure it's very clear, so I think it needs to be written in there. Am I, am I incorrect in that statement, Tanya?
Um, no, no, that's.
Okay.
Well, I think it helps to know that they go by anniversary date, and then my understanding, um, this is you guys, not me, uh, that it'll take a, the take effect date is what I question, because you guys are going to vote on it only one time a year, you know what I mean? So with that anniversary date, say they hit their anniversary date in July, are, don't they wait until January then of the next year to start?
Correct.
Getting it, okay.
So on January first, how many years do you have completed?
So I guess if you're gonna put that in there about anniversary date, I would outline how that works.
The effective date is also.
Right, like, there's an anniversary date, but there's, but there's an effective date for the pay, you know what I mean?
You have to plan it for budget purposes.
Sure.
So you're saying, if my anniversary takes place on January fifth, I have to wait a whole year to January? That's stupid.
Well, it's not, I mean, it's not, it's on January. Well, it's not, I mean, it's not, it's on January first, how many years do you have completed? You have three years and three hundred and sixty-two days, but you don't have four years completed, so you're not eligible for the first level. It's, it's just timing, it's not your fault, so, not our fault, but it's how many years do you have completed come January first, when that new budget, when this new thing? Because otherwise it would be rolling, right? Yeah, like if I have somebody that's coming due June thirtieth, when I do my budget, I have to then appropriate
six months worth.
Six months worth of time, it, it, it's, it's not, with, with the number of employees.
We do it different other things, like, right, the uniform allowance, right, if their one year comes around in July, they get that second half uniform allowance, they don't get the first half, that's what you said earlier.
Yeah, they have to complete it, so, let's say, my anniversary date is August fifth, well, payout for, uh, longevity, or your clothing allowance or whatever, isn't until November, have you finished your year? Yes, because you get it. But my anniversary date is, is December fifth, clothing allowance is paid out on November thirtieth.
You don't get it.
You haven't finished it, you don't get it. There has to be a, a hard stop somewhere, or you'll never, ever be able.
You're, you're either pregnant or you're not, you've either completed four years or you haven't.
Right. Alright, what else you got for us, Eugene?
Uh, I guess, uh, the last thing I had was who's going to maintain record of the years of service, is that with the department heads, or is that with H R?
We have to do that.
Auditor.
We have to do that, I mean, I think, I think.
I'd actually add that now, and with that payroll spreadsheet, if you notice in the budget, that's included on that payroll spreadsheet, you know exactly how many years someone is gonna have, January one, twenty twenty-five, for that new budget.
Ours are in, ours is in our scheduling software, so their start date's put in there, so it automatically tracks it.
H R should also have that information during the hire dates as well.
They, they do.
Right, I do that in the same spreadsheet.
That's all right now. That, that's a lot of amendings, I would like to see it passed, and then I would like to make sure we've got a clear version, and if necessary, amend it again prior to it being implemented.
Okay.
So are you making a motion to make all these amendments?
We have the, we already have a motion as amended, so now this is, yes, we need the emotion for the new amendments.
What I, yeah, what I, let me read it first, make sure that I've encompassed everything. So I'll make note of the changes that I have made based on this conversation, um. The title has been changed to, and ordinance adopting sheriff's deputy corrections officers and nine one one hourly employee experience longevity pay.
Longevity experience pay. Longevity needs to come first.
Uh, nothing was changed in the body until we get down to, uh, the first substantive paragraph A after now therefore. It now reads, in addition to the annual salary for sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, and nine one one hourly employees appropriated by the Delaware County Council, sheriff's deputies and corrections officers, sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, and nine one one employ, hourly employees shall be entitled to receive additional compensation based on their years of experience in employment with Delaware County. Uh, A, sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, and nine one one hourly employees with between zero and four years of experi, of prior experience shall not receive an experience pay increase. And this is a longevity. They'll not receive a, a longevity experience pay increase. Uh, sub B, sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, and nine one one hourly employees with between five to nine years of prior experience shall receive a longevity experience pay increase of one thousand dollars paid in equal payroll installments throughout the year. Sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, and nine one one hourly employees with between ten to fourteen years of prior experience shall receive a longevity experience pay increase of two thousand dollars paid in equal installments throughout the year. Sub D, sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, and nine one one hourly employees with between fifteen to nineteen years of prior experience shall receive a longevity experience pay increase of three thousand dollars paid in equal installments throughout the year. Sub E, and I should note, I added in sub paragraph A before, so all of the other paragraphs have been dumped, dumped, dropped down, uh, a letter. Sub E, sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, and nine one one hour employees with between twenty to twenty-four years of prior experience shall receive a longevity experience pay increase of four thousand dollars paid in equal installments throughout the year. And then sub F, sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, and nine one one hour employees with twenty-five or more year, with twenty-five or more, that's worded properly, with twenty-five years of experience or more shall receive a longevity experience pay increase of five thousand dollars paid in equal payroll installments throughout the year. I've added in a new paragraph B that states, a prior of experience shall be determined as of the annual anniversary hire date, employees shall be entitled to receive their respective longevity experience pay effective January first of the year following their employment anniversary. Section C, the Delaware County Auditor's Office shall establish a new longevity experience pay line within the appropriate budgets for the purposes of handling these payments. And then, section D, the foregoing shall be subject to the annual budget appropriation of the Delaware County Council.
Ben, can you go back to, to paragraph A, right before you started the, the subsection A, B, C, D, and read that again, please?
In addition to the annual salary for the sheriffs, for sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, and nine one one hourly employees appropriated by the Delaware County Council, sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, and nine one one hourly employees shall be entitled to receive additional compensation based on their years of experience in employment with Delaware County. Okay, and then what's the next one?
Hey, what's A?
What's A again? Zero to four years of experience do not receive longevity.
Alright.
You have to reread all that for me real quick.
Alright, do I have a motion with the new amendments that Ben just read out?
Hold on. I have a question for Ben when he has eyes back on it. Yes. Ben, in the final whereas paragraph, does it state, you said there's no changes, but should it state nine one one hourly employees? I lied to you, I did change that, I guess.
Okay.
Because it does say that on here. I, I went back through and did a word search, and anywhere it said sheriff's deputies and corrections officers, I added in.
Okay.
Hourly nine one one employees. I'll make the motion to approve all the amendments. Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Bill, roll call on the documents with the new amendments. Mr. Flanagan? Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mr. Camps?
Yes.
Ms. Piper? Yes. Alright, so I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two six.
I moved.
Second.
Yeah?
Didn't we already have a motion second to adopt it?
We sure did, you're right, I apologize by Bill and Ryan.
Correct.
Roll call.
Our medication's wearing off.
It is. Mr. Flanagan? Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mr. Camps?
Yes.
Ms. Piper? Yes. Yes, don't trust us, we gotta do it.
It's, I, I want to tell you guys thank you sincerely for this, this is something that I've been pushing for, for the past six years since I got first elected, and this is, this is a big deal for us, so, I want to shout out to our corrections officers again for the hard work they're doing, and, and all the money that they're making by the inmates, but I want to appreciate you guys for this, I thank you.
Alright, now we've got, uh, let's see, public safety, excuse me, deputy prosecutor experience pay ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two seven, and it's second reading.
Move to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Bill, second by Ryan, and I'm sure Eugene hit us with all your amendments.
Uh, I mean, start, we'll just start at the top, it probably needs to say longevity experience pay instead of.
Yep.
Title currently says. And down in there where it says A through F, after you get through A, I believe it's B through E, say may instead of shall.
Actually. A, B, C, D.
Yeah, it's on all of them. It says may and should say, yeah, say shall.
Through F does, but actually G through L say shall, I see, or through, through, uh.
Basically, they all should say.
All of them, eh.
Shall.
And does it also need to say that the auditor's office will set up a fund?
Yes.
And then, uh, I guess I'd like to ask the prosecutor's office whether they're in the agreement from the previous one of where the, uh, experience pay, is that with Delaware County, or is that?
It is not with Delaware County, it's prosecutor experience.
As a prosecutor, so if they were a public defender, that doesn't count, or if they were lawyer of, of other types, that is prosecuting lawyer.
Uh, in, I mean, the ones that we have right now have all been prosecutor experience is what we've gone on. I would have to clarify that with Eric.
Okay.
Which I can text in here.
I think we need to have that definition, and then it needs to be included in the ordinance.
Let me do that real quick.
I, I got some other concerns. If we're gonna open it up, because that's fundamentally different than what we just did, typically a prosecutor is, is, is right in line with a public defender, they're, they're generally people who are coming out of law school who, you know, most firms won't want to hire somebody unless they got three years' experience, so they go become a deputy prosecutor for three years and, or a public defender for three years, and they get their experience, then they move on. So, we're fortunate here in Delaware County that most of our prosecutors are all experienced, but they've been here the whole time. I don't know, I, I, I think if we open it up to the out of counties, it's just gonna be, uh, I don't even know if it's a good or a bad thing, I just, I guess I have some concerns, it, you know, prosecutors or, or really just lawyers at the end of their career from other places, just come here after twenty years to cash in on this, this pretty significant experience, um, addition to the pay, we already upped the pay quite a bit, uh, so if we open it up that everyone outside of Delaware County, that's not really rewarding them as employees of Delaware County, that's just saying, okay, you're coming in, you've got some experience, so we're gonna hire you to do it, but again, it could be a, it could be a good thing, I don't know, I just wanted to put my concerns on the record.
I think it's a reasonable, reasonable point, um, set aside the Delaware County part of it a little bit. The days where you sort of, you know, prosecuted for a while and then moved into private practice and more. That's really not true anymore, prosecutors, it's such a specialty, um, that, uh, I think this type of, of experience pay is, is completely relevant, now, I'm, I'm torn about this, whether or not it should apply for out of county experience, I, somebody who has that kind of experience from another county comes in here could be immensely valuable. You, you, they could be in a situation where they really need that, that one felony murder prosecutor, and they find the right person who can step right in and do that job, that's worth a lot. So I'm, 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 I'm torn about whether we should limit it to just Delaware County experience.
Yeah, and, and with you saying that, I guess I was, while you were talking, I was thinking what we're paying for is an inexperienced lawyer, so should I even be concerned if they're from out of town? If they're coming in, because I know for a while we weren't getting anybody, you know, so, I'm gonna kind of, I don't do this very often, but I'm kind of deferring to what, what you think on this with your years of experience, because it's a little bit more outside of my wheelhouse.
Excuse me, Eric said that he would like it to be experience in criminal law, in practicing criminal law.
As a prosecutor or just practicing criminal?
Criminal law.
That's, that's too broad for my taste.
So it could be a defense attorney for twenty years.
You know, I, I have at least two or three traffic tickets for my practice, that qualifies me.
Extra twenty for you.
It'd be limited to either as a public defender or a prosecutor?
So, I'd love a prosecutorial experience.
Yeah, let's just keep it.
It's a different, it's a different thing.
Okay.
To me.
I don't have a problem with if they co, if they come with experience from another county, like I, I agree with, with Bill on that, I mean, that's.
I, I.
I, but I think maybe we stick with just prosecuting experience.
I'm torn completely also, because I think that this is a, we are trying to incentivize people to stay in Delaware County, and then be employed by Delaware County, so, we did that with the public safety group, we're making it different here, I can understand why, given the, given what an experienced prosecutor means versus perhaps, you know, a deputy or dispatcher who comes with a couple of years' experience, but I don't know.
Just to bring up a point, this is gonna not work for the master commissioner side, because they are not necessarily prosecutors, yeah. Like our current master commissioner was not a prosecutor, he came from D C S.
So, they're separated out.
But.
You could say they're prosecutors.
Probably not in the version that you have, but they're being separated.
You've got them separated out there, okay.
On the master commissioner though, it, it should be singular, there's only one.
I left it plural just in the event that, I, I can put brackets around it, or I can make it singular.
I wouldn't make it singular, if, if it comes to the fact of time we ever have a second master commissioner, we'll take that out of the pile. And I think that experience ought to be in Delaware County, as master commissioner.
And that's how we look at it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So that's, I look at that differently.
What do you think, Eugene?
I'm glad to get clarification from the prosecutor's office, I was thinking the, both of these would be Delaware County experience only. However, as far as prosecuting versus public defender, I mean, I, I am very open to both of those, but I will lean on Mr. Hughes as well, uh, I would support prosecuting experience only.
We have had to hire out of the P D's office before as well.
I mean, eh, with them having open positions, and us needing more, I guess, broader brush, I like seeing maybe just a little bit bigger brush than just prosecuting.
Well, we're looking at this annually, right?
Very true.
Like, so.
Very true.
So how about we say prosecuting, public defender, Delaware County.
Prosecuting in there for this year, and we can't fill a position, and your office comes back and says, hey, this might help us fill positions.
Just spend it, amend it.
Remend it. But, let's listen to it again, I mean, that, that's, that's what this is for, I mean, that's why I would put a one-year expiration sunset, whatever you wanna call it on there.
I, I don't know, I mean, um, again, this is your guys' wheelhouse, not, not necessarily yours, Eugene, but Bill's wheelhouse, would, when I think of a prosecutor and public defender, I think of it like offense and defense, it's the same game, it's just one's doing one side, one's doing the other. You're saying that it, is that big of a difference is that, that we should limit it to just prosecutors?
It, it is, there is a difference, but for one thing, the public defenders are part-time, whereas, here's a full time, so, um, if you want to include public defender experience on.
If we're at that point, I mean, maybe back to Eric's original statement of criminal law, I mean.
That's a really big brush.
That's too broad.
It's too broad.
It, it is all budgeted for this year, and everyone that is in the twenty twenty five budget, it does have the, the criminal, the prosecutor experience.
So, okay, then provide the wording, that's fine. That's a prosecuting and public defender experience, and, and a year if we don't like that, we'll.
Within Delaware County.
Right, I would say, but I don't think Bill agrees with that.
I don't agree with that, no. Again, I don't know if it's a genuine concern or not, because in the end, we, yes, you wanna reward someone who's, who's, um, a tenured employee, but at the same time, we may need somebody with that experience, so, I, I really don't know either way. So, I'm kinda, but at the same time, you know, Mr. Hughes has the experience, so, if he says that, then I'm gonna have to go with what he says.
Public defender, prosecuting experience, fine, just that. No?
Only within Delaware County?
That's what we're, no, just blank, no, no, no county.
Do you think, Bill? Uh, but some of my other questions, I think, answered with nine-one-one and sheriff, but who will keep record of start dates and years of experience, will that be your officer, HR?
Well, HR has all of those records, but I keep records of it as well. The original matrix that, that Eric provided to all of you did have the years of experience on there as well.
Sure, but going forward, who's gonna be responsible for maintaining that?
We will keep track of it, and it will also be done just like the sheriff's has done, if somebody's, um, date is in January, they will not get it for that year. We need that higher-end language, anniversary date language in this one as well.
Yeah, being, please shall be entitled to receive their longevity pay effective January first, and the prior year of experience shall be determined as of the annual anniversary hire date.
Right.
And we're adding in. The deputy prosecutors shall receive years of experience based on both their deputy, based on both their prosecutorial experience and public defender experience in Delaware County.
Get rid of it.
For Delaware County.
We're getting rid of it.
Get rid of the Delaware County, okay.
I have a quick question for Ben, um. We've kind of moved the goalposts a little bit as this has went along, it was experience pay matrix, now I, we're throwing that word longevity out there a lot again. I go back to that sta- salary study, and the phrase they used over and over that I hate of equity, um, pay equity. I'm concerned, is there any concern on your part that someone in, let's say, recorder's office or the treasurer's office is gonna come and say, wait a minute, I've got twenty years' experience, why don't I get longevity pay like these guys are all getting? And then we're backed in a corner, and we have to pay them all the same, because this is supposed to be for public safety, law enforcement, but if we're using terms like longevity, are we gonna put us?
The word longevity is being inserted in there by DLGF, is my understanding.
SPRA.
Or SBA.
I get that, but is that gonna force our hand with other departments?
I don't believe so, no, because this is, this is not a general ordinance that you're passing, this is a specific one narrowly tailored to a specific department, and even within that department, to specific jobs. So, even within prosecutor's office, this ordinance would not apply to staff or other non-prosecutor. Well, wouldn't even, it doesn't apply to the prosecutor, um, only his deputies, so, no, I, I don't think this backs you into a corner, that's not to say people won't make an issue of it, but I don't know that they are, I don't know that by passing this, you are giving them a legal leg to stand on.
Okay, thank you for saying that.
They, they might use it for, make trial maneuvering or something like that, but, all right, let's keep moving.
Thank you.
All right.
What are you trying to express?
The specialty point system, I, I, I know I've had issues with it since it was first brought up, I think in June, or at least that's when I first got to put eyes on it. I know we've, we've sort of committed to it with a prosecutor, but I still want to at least express my opinion that I, I'm not really in favor of it as it gives too much, yes, uh, undefined and subjective opinion to the prosecutor to determine some of these, in my opinion. I, I've been told that they're very clear-cut and dry, but I still see it as if prosecutor, and I'm not saying Eric would do that, but if he had a grudge, or the prosecutor had a grudge against a deputy prosecutor, it could be used disadvantageously towards that employee.
Well, yeah, because there's a evaluation and job performance element to it, so there is, um, subjectivity in part of it, so the first portion is evaluation and job performance, meet expectations, exceeds expectation, exceptional. Then there's a caseload assignment, whether they handle only misdemeanor and finer felon, minor felony cases, and then there's major felony cases. Jury trials completed, there's three criteria, one to five, six to nine, ten or more, training, whether they're an instructor, uh, uh, different instructor, I pack in the, in the AA, then instructor at a college or university, and then additional points for additional duties, homicide liaison, high-tech crimes, supervising attorney, et cetera, et cetera. So, while there's some subjectivity to the performance element, there's a ton of other, there's one, two, three, four, five other areas that make up the points that are not as really subjective, so.
Much weight is put on the performance portion.
They get three, five, or seven points depending on their criteria, then most of the other ones are based on three, five, or three, five, seven. And then, in additional duties, it's mostly threes, and then there's forfeiture, which is two after-hours on-call coverage, which goes to one. And then, other relevant factors, appellate arguments, published legal papers, clerking for a judge, those are all one points.
We eliminate the performance portion, and reconfigure the.
I don't suggest that, I would like to see us have performance review, uh, like this on every job. Yeah, I'd be honest with you.
I would too.
Sheriff's thing, I like.
Yeah.
Descript.
Um, but I understand Eugene's point, but I don't think, it, it probably wouldn't, um.
But you're talking three to seven points, right, like?
Yeah, my actual issue with that is that his leveling, at least on the one I'm looking at here, and correct me if I'm wrong, base level zero to six, which is nothing, level one is seven to eleven, level two is twelve to seventeen, and level three is eighteen plus. We don't really have any way, I think he gave us a scale at some point, but, of who's already in these, in these proposed pays.
He did, yes.
But, my only potential issue is that, you know, you don't want everybody to be able to max out, like, that would defeat the purpose.
We have some attorneys that have done ten felony one trials this year, and then we have, you know, attorneys that work in city court. I mean, there is a difference in the work that they do.
But without having gone through this, it's hard to determine that, so.
Well, we look at this annually, so.
One thing I would like to say is that scoring system, a copy of that needs to be included with the ordinance whenever we do pass it. Yeah, it's incorporated, it's attached, it should be attached as exhibit A and is incorporated by reference.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll have, all right, um, read it, make a motion to, I make a motion to accept all the amendments. Why, why don't you let me review the, what I've got in terms of changes? Well, let me make the motion, or let me read it, and then you can move to, to adopt what I've read, if that makes sense. Um, ordinance twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four dash oh two seven added longevity experience pay and deleted, um, matrix to align it with the prior title. Nothing changed until the last whereas paragraph, whereas due to additional education, due to the additional education and testing necessary to obtain and maintain a license to practice law, the Delaware County Council wishes to establish and maintain a method of providing additional compensation for deputy prosecutor employees and the master commissioner based on years of experience as herein defined. Now, therefore, it is ordained as follows, section A, uh, did not change base rate of ninety-five.
Did we took the S off of commissioners?
Um, other than the S off of commissioners and adding in the word longevity in, into longevity experience pay, nothing has changed in, um, any of these paragraphs down to down to, uh, paragraph A, which I've added in.
Did we change the mays to shells?
You're right, the maze changed to shells in all of those paragraphs as well.
Okay.
Um, there is a new paragraph K that reads, a deputy prosecutor shall be entitled to receive a credit for each year of service as a public defender or prosecutor. The master commissioner shall be entitled to receive a credit only for each year of service with Delaware County. A prior year of experience shall be determined as, and I should change prior year of service to be experienced. A, a prior year of experience shall be determined as of the annual anniversary hire date, employees shall be entitled to receive their respective longevity experience pay effective January first of the year following their employment anniversary. Uh, paragraph L, the Delaware County Auditor's Office shall establish a new longevity experience pay line within the appropriate budgets for the purposes of handling these payments. M, the foregoing is subject to the annual budget appropriation by the Delaware County Council. N, the following matrix is intended to be a helpful example on the determination of base salaries, experience increases, and SPSs increases, and I'll add in longevity experience. That, uh, table itself, I believe, is different than what was printed in front of you in that it shows base salary of ninety-five thousand across all levels, and then it shows the longevity experience pay increase. The first level zero, second five, ten, fifteen, twenty, level one percent, level one, one percent increase, it shows only the increase rather than the actual salary. So, now it would be nine fifty, one thousand, uh, ten fifty, eleven hundred, and eleven fifty. And it's like that across all three of those levels, Eric Hoffman felt like he wanted them to look more consistent across, um, all of those levels. Effective January first, twenty twenty-five, through the thirty-first of twenty-five, December of twenty-five, and will expire without readoption by next year's council. Doesn't say anywhere in there about adding, what'd you say, exhibit A? It, yeah, it does say that, it says that on paragraph F. Um, the deputy prosecutor specialty point system is attached here too as exhibit A incorporated by reference, all right. Apologize, you put, I make the, uh, a motion to, uh, accept all amendments, sir.
Motion by Eugene, second by Bill, roll call, please. Mr. Flanagan, Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Piper. Yes. All right, roll call on the adoption of deputy prosecutor longevity experience pay ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero two seven. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, we have resolution number eighteen, twenty twenty four dash eighteen. This is the, yeah, this was our, our amended agenda from like four hours ago, um. Bill, I'll let you speak to this one as our tax abatement committee representative.
Do we have a representative from Midwest Metal?
Council wish to proceed, I, we were asked to have a representative present.
Three hours ago, maybe they did.
The process would be, today we're only considering the declaratory resolution. Then there will be a notice published and also mailed to adjoining landowners for our new policy. And then at the December meeting would be the confirming resolution, so this is not the final act, it's, it's basically the introduction.
Yeah, so this is, so say that again, so then what is this specifically?
Called the declaratory resolution.
Uh-huh.
Uh, Midwest, these, uh, locations of Midwest Metal Products are already designated as economic revitalization areas, so we're not doing that, this is only the granting of a tax abatement.
No, that, Bill, that's actually not true.
It's not true?
No, this is declaring them economic revitalization areas. From my research, Midwest Metal Products has had several ERAs declared, but I don't think they, they have multiple plants.
Right.
And I don't think any of these properties have been previously declared, so this would be declaring them an economic revitalization area.
It's just for the equipment.
I think, right. Correct, but the, the real estate itself still has to be declared an ERA before you can adopt, adopt an abatement, that's just the statutory framework.
Equipment they're purchasing, you're going to two different locations, which are why there are two persons involved.
That is the dumbest wording of, of, I, I get it, that's the way it's gotta, how, if you're doing equipment somewhere, how can we declare it an ERA when it's a functioning factory? Like, I get it, that's the way.
Revitalizing that area in the functioning factory, right?
I hate that. Uh, I like the idea that we have manufacturers that when they're buying new equipment, they're applying for these, because I think these are good, effective ways to use, um, the abatements. I really wish, because I wouldn't have any objection to this at all, but I, something Bill said that kind of stuck out at me, they were asked to be here, and they're not here, I think that's something we shouldn't just gloss over.
Uh, Matt also said they may have been here four hours ago, but.
The, the other side of that coin is that, um, they informed the tax abatement committee that they didn't hope to order this equipment uh, this calendar year, because there is a significant lead time. Um, which would require us to, uh, take up the, uh, resolution today.
The, uh, this resolution is only preliminary, if you pass this resolution, public notice has to be printed in the newspaper. You actually have to hold a public hearing before your next meeting in December. So, if they were gonna pick a meeting to be at, that would be the one to be at, because that's when the actual abatement itself will be considered, this is preliminary prior to the actual abatement.
So, so it's really relevant for here or not?
I'm sorry?
It's really irrelevant to not at this particular meeting, other than the fact they were specifically asked.
I mean, if, if I were gonna pick one of the two of them to be at, it would be the December meeting, but the relevancy, I guess, is up to the council.
I feel like with the way today's gone, I'm, I'm willing to.
Let me go ahead and, I'll go ahead and summarize the tax abatement committee that, um, a week ago today. Um, Chad Smith, who was the CFO of, uh, Midwest Metal was there, and, uh, answered all of our questions. Uh, you received a copy of the application today, I apologize, I didn't get it out earlier. They are purchasing three pieces of equipment, um, metalworking equipment totaling, uh, two and a quarter million dollars. Uh, this replaces essentially twenty-five-year-old equipment. Uh, and they, uh, it goes, uh, for use in their industrial division, they have a large customer that they are developing, uh, and this will help them be competitive in, in, uh, providing, uh, product for that customer. Um, I think they're acquainted with Midwest Metal Products, uh, uh, in business here in Delaware County for, uh, I think just almost a hundred years now. Um, they have, um, about a hundred and forty full-time employees, uh, a hundred and twenty-nine full-time employees. They would actually like to increase that, but they can't find full-time people, they have to fill in with part-time people, uh, but they think. Uh, but they think that over time, as they are able to increase the business with this new customer, they will be able to uh perhaps uh hire as many as uh four new employees as well as retaining five employees by reason of this abatement. You have their wage information in the application. The uh committee asked a lot of good questions. Uh, and we also reviewed the tax abatement guidelines that the council adopted back in June. Um, looking at those, uh, the investment does qualify for a tax abatement under Indiana state law. Uh, as far as giving local contractors and suppliers the opportunity, uh, in this case, the equipment is not manufactured uh anywhere in the state of Indiana for that matter. Um, we've already discussed the jobs retained or created, and you have the wage information. There won't be any change in the existing land uses, and they do comply with all local zoning ordinances. Um, no adverse environmental impacts. This is all very clean equipment. No additional public infrastructure or public support. Uh, and their business is unique in Delaware County, so there's no unfair competitive advantage over existing local businesses. They have uh been very cooperative, but not only in this uh request, but in prior requests. And um number ten of our tax abatement guidelines is particularly appropriate. Uh, we said tax abatement is particularly appropriate for established, locally-owned businesses with a record of job creation or retention who want to invest in new real estate improvements or new equipment. And that's uh, that pretty much defines Midwest Metal Products. So the Tax Abatement Committee unanimously recommended approval uh of the designation of this uh as an economic revitalization area and approved the tax abatement. It will be a five-year uh tax abatement uh phased uh out so that uh a- after the first year is hundred percent. So at beginning of the second year, the county will receive additional tax revenue through the property, uh, personal property taxes.
So it goes twenty percent each year?
Yes.
Step down, okay.
Do we have a motion approved?
I'm about to ask for one.
I, I, I will move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one eight.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just want to be forth.
Second was Phil, the second by Matt.
I want to be forthcoming. My wife works for Midwest Metals, so I'm going to be abstaining from this, just to let everybody know.
We need four votes. All right, roll call, please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Abstained.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Did you have someone here from?
Yes.
So I'm going to ask if, okay, the council, if we just skip down to new business real quick for the Foundry Row Apartments update. So we've been
Apologize in advance for this.
Holding, holding this young lady hostage for a while, if that's okay with the rest of you?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's still lost. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, good afternoon, thank you for having me. Uh, I really appreciate everyone's time. My name is Marissa Canatsor, and I'm a Development Director with T W G Development. So over the summer, our VP of Development, Ryan Kelly, came and spoke to you all about a potential development out on South Cowan Road. Um, and I'm coming here today just to give you a brief update. Um, we applied for competitive funding through the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority back in July. We found out last week that we were awarded funding. Um, they only award five throughout the state, and we were, we received the funding award for the northeast region of the state. So very excited. Um, beat out a lot of applications in Fort Wayne and other communities. So we think this development has a lot of potential. Um, so I'll give a quick overview of the project just as a refresh. I'm not sure what all Ryan shared previously, but it'll be a one hundred and twenty units of workforce housing. So it's workforce housing because it was awarded tax credits through I H C D A, and it will offer one, two, and three-bedroom units. Incomes for these units will be allowable up to fifty-six thousand dollars annually. So a wide range of incomes will qualify to live here while still trying to keep rents at that attainable rate. Um, and here, just depending on bedroom size, anywhere from seven hundred and twenty-five dollars up to one thousand fifteen dollars. So as I mentioned, this was a very competitive application process, and the way that they do it is through a scoring system. So I'm going to jump down to uh number three on my list is this pilot that we're talking about. I believe Ryan gave a brief overview of what a pilot is back over the summer. Um, but this pilot was a very crucial piece of our application process. So the state will award us points if we can get a ten percent local contribution. So what that means is the total development cost for Foundry Row is about twenty-six million dollars. If we could secure two-point-six million dollars in local contribution, we would gain additional points. So rather than trying to ask for a grant or a forgivable loan, we will, we were able to count savings from this payment in lieu of taxes in order to gain those points. So on the second sheet I have, I apologize for the tiny writing. I was trying to fit everything um in the tax calculations, but it gives a breakdown of how we figured our estimated annual taxes without a pilot and then how that looks with the pilot. So with the pilot, um, the state passed back in twenty twenty-two um, and then allowed pilots for affordable housing and workforce housing developments, stating that developers and local units of government can agree upon a certain amount to be paid annually um in place of real property taxes. So that's what I have broken out here. Um, our goal with figuring the pilot amount was to reach that two-point-six million dollars in savings over the fifteen-year period. Uh, and that is broken out year by year, starting at thirty thousand dollars in the first year and increasing three percent annually. And I just threw a ton of information at you, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Marissa, for uh, for being here and pulling this together. Um, and just as a reminder, we, we submitted a letter of, of um recommendation, I guess I'll call it, um, to the Indiana Housing Community Development Authority back in June, um, which indicated that the taxes that she outlined here, the um, this is a little bit higher than it was before. Or no, that's not true. The, the savings is about the same. Um, this is, this is the exact same situation that you guys have now done with Twelfth and Burlington and at Kilgore Place, which is going in, in construction currently, um, right there on um Kilgore, uh, just east of Tillotson. And this is another um along now those lines from workforce housing perspective. Um, so this is a, I think, an enormous um asset to, to what we know from an economic development standpoint is a shortage of, of housing, workforce housing and, and the like. And we've not had prior to these two facilities and now this one. Not sure there's been a uh, a new apartment complex built in, in our county in, in several years. So to me, this is a huge win. The next step then will be that agreement, the pilot agreement, that we, the county council, will have to establish and, and approve. Um, I believe Ryan indicated he'd like to get that done as, you know, we'll probably try to get it drafted maybe for December and then have it approved after the first of the year. Uh, because um, remind me the construction idea, the thoughts of closing and all that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so now that we have officially received the award of funding, um, designs are full and fully in progress and estimated to be completed um by February. So as long as those designs are complete by February, we would like to close in March or April of twenty twenty-five and start construction right after. Um, so with the pilot, it would be going through the ordinance process. So if we were able to get on the agenda for December or January for the first reading of that, it would work really well with our timeline.
Do you work with local contractors and trades?
Yes, so we have an in-house construction team that will act as the general contractor, and then they sub everything out to the specialty um subcontractors.
Mid basis.
Correct, yep.
All right. Anything else from Marissa, while she's here? Oh, thank you so much for the update.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, hopping back up to appointments and committee reports. Um, I don't believe we have any committee reports, but I just want to make sure I take a moment to remind everyone that we are kind of like in our open enrollment of such for our twenty twenty-five board appointment opportunities. Um, those opportunities include, um, Matt and I have been going back and forth along with HR and the commissioners, and now we've got some information from the city too, trying to get our boards list all intact. So we have some additional information now than we did last month. But uh, the boards include alcohol beverage board. We have our county council attorney, the Daleville Economic Board, so you need to live in Daleville. Um, it's never met, so I'm not really sure what that kind of commitment would look like. Housing Authority Board, we do have clarification on that. We need, are seeking one Republican. Um, and then we need one resident, so you must live in the Delaware County Housing Authority um to apply for the resident role. Um, the Property Tax Assessment Board, we have an opening for a Democrat on that board. Redevelopment Commission, we have two appointments available for that. Tax Abatement Committee is three appointments. Yorktown Redevelopment, um, again, that you must live in Yorktown.
I don't show any expiration for that one.
I'm sorry?
The expirations are for
Well, that, no, I wouldn't necessarily get too caught up on that particular.
So there is one for Yorktown?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the, uh, excuse me, it's not the, it's not called redevelopment, it's the Economic Board.
Which one?
It's the same thing as Daleville, but it's Yorktown version, the Economic Board.
Okay.
Um, and we were, we received information last week that we also are looking for a Democrat to serve on the Board of Health. Which came in late. Um, and as we mentioned earlier, we'll also be looking for an HR representative from the community to serve on our HR committee.
Sure.
So if you know anyone that has the right skill sets, that would be a great asset to these boards. Make sure that they um communicate back with us. They can email, if they email, or any of you in the room, want to email our county council, D I S T at C O dot Delaware dot I N dot U S. That email will get distributed to all the council members. Um, so again, that's county council, D I S T at C O dot Delaware dot I N dot U S by December first. And please provide the following information. We need your name, your address, phone number, email address, which board or boards you would like to serve on, your political party affiliation, and then any resume or paragraph of your qualifications uh that would make you a good fit for this board would be appreciated. So um, that's, that's what we got here.
Um, requests as well um of the council, if we could, please. Now that we've known, there's been some efforts to create a list uh with all the pertinent information, I would like to uh for us, the council, to go just a little bit further.
Yep.
If we could publish this list on our
I've got a graphic ready to go. I'm just waiting, I need to figure out, because I'm trying to put like when they meet
Mm-hmm.
on there because obviously you need to be available to attend the meeting.
Right.
And so there's one board left that I'm waiting to figure out.
Already working on that. You're going to release that? Awesome.
Matt's seen it.
That'd be good.
Colorful and pretty.
That way we can share it and share it in community groups, and then everybody can, can uh have the best chance to get their eyes on it.
Yep. It's forthcoming.
Creating that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Both of the other members of the Tax Abatement Committee have expressed an interest in considering.
Okay.
I had them send their emails to the auditor's office. Uh, so if somebody would kind of be looking out for where these emails get to and compiling them, that would be up.
Marissa, I think, is compiling them, right?
Yeah.
So if we get them separately, I've got a couple separately I've sent to her, so she'll put them all together.
So it's name, address, email, political affiliation.
Which boards? Yeah, probably, yeah, everything.
Okay, there, thank you.
Yes, Sonia? Um, you could, when you post this, you could put email your interest to. Yeah, I have it on there, but I have it with our county council distribution to go to all of us. Okay, yeah.
If I get any, if anyone sends me any individually, I'll forward it to everyone.
Send them over, yeah. Um, I don't believe we have any old business, new business. We already handled the Foundry Row Apartments. And the last thing on here for us to talk about is our twenty twenty-five uh meeting schedule, which we all have a copy of. Um, there are some dates on here that are a little uh different from what are typical fourth Tuesday. Um, being mindful of spring break, because it's not only members of council who have children, but those who are in government also have kids that want to spend some time doing fun things. Uh, that date's a little bit different. You'll see that adjusted um around Juneteenth is adjusted, and then around Thanksgiving. And obviously, December is always earlier um in the month. So if anyone has any uh changes they'd like to see, we can discuss those now. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the schedule as presented.
So moved, Sonia.
Motion from Ryan, second by Matt. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Flanagan. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Looked at officials department heads. Anyone stay right here? Yep, here we go.
I know.
Hi.
I've done it a lot. All right, so I need to, I need to bring you up to speed on the email that I sent about the salary stuff.
Okay.
All right, for you numbers people, you should write these numbers down because it, it'll make sense when I'm done.
Okay.
So there's a problem with the, with the payroll lines for twenty twenty-five. Um, I pointed it all out to you in, in, in general. I'm going to explain it to you. The last two weeks of this year, we would normally get paid on January first theoretically, right? So we would actually get paid on December thirty-first because you don't typically pay on a holiday. Unfortunately, we're going to get paid on January second. Um, so that creates twenty-seven payrolls in twenty twenty-five's budget. Okay? Hourly rates for hourly employees that are not exempt, I know, I know it's called the salary ordinance, they're not technically salaries, especially for hourly employees. I'm going to give you some simple numbers because they're in my head right now. Starting dispatcher is going to make forty-nine thousand dollars, okay, for twenty twenty-five. There's two thousand and eighty hours in a full-time work year. That equates to twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents an hour. Because there's twenty-seven payrolls, we will be short in the payroll lines by eighty hours. I know that doesn't make sense numerically, but that's how it works because of the way the payrolls fall. I talked to the Department of Labor because there was some pushback that you could spread paychecks out over twenty-seven payrolls. And you can do that for a salaried person like me. You take my salary, you can, you can average it out over twenty-seven payrolls. There's really not a lot I can do, okay? However, for hourly employees, you can't do that, according to the Department of Labor. You can't then turn around and say, well, you're only budgeted under the salary ordinance for forty-nine thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five, which would then mean you'd have to divide based on the payrolls by twenty-one hundred and sixty hours, which would give them an hourly rate of twenty-two sixty-eight. Okay? That's not fair to them, and it's not ethical or moral. Their pay is based on two thousand and eighty hours a year, which equates to twenty-three fifty-five. And that doesn't only equate to their hourly pay, it equates their overtime, it equates their holiday pay and every other part of it. So you can't, you can't require, based on my understanding of the law, and Mr. Freeman may, may correct me at some point, but based on my interpretation of the law, you can't say based on my interpretation of the law, you can't say, based on twenty, twenty-eighty, we're gonna pay you twenty-three fifty-five an hour. But we're gonna withhold a certain amount from your paychecks every payroll to meet that twenty-seventh payroll, it doesn't work that way. And it's short the employee. So in essence, what should have happened, two thousand and twenty-four, which we're currently in, should have been the twenty-seven payroll. Because we should have actually got the twenty-seven payroll on the twenty-fourth. Alright, I understand that's not gonna happen, it's gonna come out at January second, I, I get it. That puts us into a twenty-seven payroll period through no fault of the employees or, or, or department heads or anybody else. The problem comes in is that those lines, even though they're under a salary ordinance, those lines are budgeted for two thousand and eighty hours a year. What should have happened during the budget process is we should have included that twenty-seventh payroll, at least for hourly employees, into the budget. So now what, what we're gonna be faced with is we're gonna have to, uh, use me as an example. I need to find all of that money, hopefully in my two thousand and twenty-five budget, and transfer into all the salary lines in order to make them whole. Right, I don't know that every department's gonna have the availability to do this, and I say that because thirty-two and a half hour week employees are based on, that are hourly, are based on sixteen hundred ninety hours a year, okay? When you divide their, their, their salary line by sixteen hundred ninety, that sets their hourly rate. You run into the same problem by paying twenty-seven payrolls regardless of whether you're at forty hours a week or thirty-two and a half hours a week. Every single budget line, with the exception of salaries, and I had a spirited debate with the Department of Labor person because even salaried people are based on full-time hours of twenty-eighty. So even myself, the sheriff, anybody else that's salaried theoretically should get the same amount averaged out over two thousand and eighty hours, okay? I'm not here to make the argument for that because I think there's gonna be a lot of pushback on salaried people, I get it, okay? However, you can't punish the hourly people and reduce their pay every pay period in order to meet the twenty-seventh payroll. You also can't hold them to a lesser overtime rate or holiday rate because their pay rate should be based on the two thousand and eighty hours at the salary that was approved. I know everybody pushed back on me, or some people did, it's a salary ordinance and it's a salary, it's not a salary for an hourly employee. That's the difference, we call it a salary ordinance, it is what it is, they are pay lines.
I have a quick question, permit, do we base our pay based off of the total amount of dollars earned a year? Or do we base it off of an hourly rate?
You base, you guys adopt a salary amount, you do not adopt an hourly amount.
So what I was explaining, or tried to explain to Fred was that whether it's twenty-seven pays or it's thirty-two pays, doesn't really matter, if you're being paid forty-nine thousand dollars a year, it's gonna be divided by twenty-seven. Not twenty-six in this year, your hourly rate or your calculated overtime rate remains the twenty-eighty, correct? So there, if you had a, uh, Chief Deputy Stanley asked me this question about the overtime rate, if somebody's paying in a traditional year, their hourly rate will remain the same. It will, it will be the, the twenty-eighty divided by whatever they make, that will be their hourly rate, am I stating that correctly?
My understanding is yes, the payroll frequency is changing, not the annual amount nor the hours.
However, you can't cut somebody's hourly rate to fit into the twenty-seven.
You're not cutting their hourly rate.
You are, you are, because in twenty-seven payrolls, Matt.
Set an hourly rate, you're not cutting it, you're dividing the amount of money they make per year by the number of pays.
Then their hourly rate will, will drop, which will affect the overtime and everything else, it's not a salary, it's an hourly rate. The forty-nine thousand is based on two thousand and eighty hours, which gives you an hourly rate of twenty-three fifty-five. You can then not pay them twenty-seven payrolls at twenty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents an hour, which is what it turns out to be, in order to fit that forty-nine thousand dollar number. I hope Mister Freeman looks at this, I talked to the Department of Labor and was told that I was absolutely correct. You cannot penalize the employee because of the pay cycle.
Or whatever, whatever it is the council determines, we have to absolutely make it one hundred percent clear what the, what the answer is. Because we can't have certain departments, uh, uh, offsetting their employees' pay and others not. So whatever we've come up with by the end of the year on this, it has to be set in stone.
And I don't prolong this, yeah, we, we need to solve the issue, but for that January second pay.
It's for the last two years of, of two thousand and twenty-four.
Oh, that's at the two thousand and twenty-four, right?
But it should have, yes, but it should have been a twenty-seventh pay in two thousand and twenty-four.
There were twenty-six pays in two thousand?
Correct.
It's a leap year, so that, that every three to five years, this is what happens.
Aside from that January second payroll.
We then have twenty-six, twenty-six more payrolls.
Pays that would work, so that's, that's the issue.
Correct.
Thank you.
If I may, uh, add to what you just spoke on, Mister Hughes, I believe the starting date for the two thousand and twenty-five pay period is November twelfth? Yeah, so you're actually looking at two thousand and twenty-five.
Correct, absolutely, and that's what creates the twenty-seventh payroll, but you're paying people for the last two years out of two thousand and twenty-four. So, so like I said, I, I don't dispute the fact that, that it is a salary line, it is approved at forty-nine thousand, I don't dispute any of that. The problem that you come into because of the pay cycle is you can't, you can't reduce the hourly rate to fit the forty-nine thousand dollars, they are, the pay is based on forty-nine thousand at two thousand and eighty hours. That's what sets the hourly rate for an hourly employee.
So this isn't the first time this has occurred, Emily, you've been here a long time, what happened previously?
My understanding was, I talked to some people, that what they did is they fit it into twenty-seven.
Yeah, and I will say, I don't have hourly rate employees, the only hourly rate employee I have is part-time, and I pay for the hours they work. So I think part-time's different than his hourly rate employees, so I don't think it was ever brought up before. Yeah.
Tony just said it was brought up a long time ago.
Yeah.
Cause his department's gonna face the same thing, right? Because it's still going to be, if they're salaried at fifty thousand, you would divide that fifty thousand by two thousand and eighty, and that's what their hourly rate is. But you, you, you have to account in the budget for that extra payroll just because of the way that it falls. There's always gonna be a twenty-seventh payroll every, I think it's, yeah, I don't remember what the years are. But you, but, but you have to budget for that, and so I'll have to, in order to make that payroll and keep them at the twenty-three fifty-five an hour. I'm gonna have to find the money and transfer into every single line so that I don't go over budget in.
We don't have a gross number, what this would.
Uh, so I think for mine originally, it was around sixty thousand, don't quote me on that, and that doesn't include.
Countywide, we don't have.
I have, well, I don't know because every department's different, right? My people aren't salaried, with the exception of the supervisory staff, they're all hourly. And there's overtime involved and there's holiday pay involved, which you don't have in most of the other departments, other than probably the sheriffs, EMS, like, like the, the jail. It, it, it probably isn't a countywide impact, that, that, the, the problem is, for us it is.
Well, for, from our perspective, it is, it's a budget item, so.
Correct. And I'm not saying.
Department it comes from, doesn't matter.
It was nobody's fault, the problem is, it's like anything else, and we've heard this today. They've always just done stuff, right? Whether, in, 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 whether it's right or wrong, it's been like an accepted practice, you know? I was pretty crucial and critical of the auditor's office, okay? Wasn't being critical of Tanya, I wasn't being critical of anybody in particular, okay? They, they faced a really bad year, and, and I will stand here publicly and say, I think Tanya's done a great job. She did, she did a great job during the budget, I think Kida, for all the stuff that's put on her, does a great job, they all do. I'm not, I, I'm not trying to turn this into hate, what I'm saying is I'm trying to find the problems and fix them before they become problems. And this is gonna be a problem with budget lines because of the way that it is.
I will take it back and try to get an answer.
Yeah.
Daughter's office has weighed in with my, to me, so, um, stipulate, I'm reiterating what was, I was told, so if there's something different, then maybe.
Like I said, I, I went with your.
That's all I've ever known is, uh, and I haven't been in the auditor's a long time, but for all the years I've been here, hey, we got twenty-seven pays this year. You're gonna get a little bit less on each check, okay? You know what I mean, like, as an employee who receives.
And for salaried people, that's a pay, like I said, I called the Department of Labor after your conversation with me, Matt.
Alright, we, I understand, Fred, it's fine, we've been here a long time, we, we took it into, we'll take it into account and we'll, we'll get an answer.
Any other elected officials or department heads?
I wanna, I wanna have you confirm what I think I heard, you said that the, the, our overtime rates are still as if there were twenty-six pays, okay, that was one question. Four hours and forty-five minutes ago, I remember what I was gonna ask you, I knew what I was gonna ask you, but it had to do with roll-in longevity and how that's done. So I'm gonna have Nancy ask a question.
Alright, but just so I can take and give the budget, because I have to provide to the auditor all the salaries that, that we have all set out. That roll-in money, you said you were gonna address in January, is that correct? We have five employees that get roll-in longevity, meaning we've been here so long, you know, since dirt was, yeah, I call it roll-in, you guys call it built-in.
Pro-rated, yeah, that's what we're taking care of, right?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's in the budget.
No, I had to remove it from my salaries when I gave you salaries, because you gave a flat amount as for the, for each position.
I'm sorry, excuse me, didn't ask to speak, but, uh, it's in the budget book. The line was created in budget during budget.
Right, ours was empty.
For the pro eight, pro-rated.
Right, but it's empty, it has no money on it.
Which it'll go in there for two thousand and twenty-five, it'll take effect, as far as money in it, it would be for the two thousand and twenty-five year.
So it has to be appropriated in January and put in there, am I right?
No, 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 that, that was included.
But it's not in the book, that you guys sent us as the final budget. It says zero.
Elizabeth, can you check on hers? One twenty-nine or one forty-five?
One twenty-nine, one forty-five, both have some in it, so. I, I just want, it's going to be there, I, so when I figure hourly rates, I wanna make sure I include that, because that would change.
I, I know she added it, maybe you didn't get the right copy, I don't know, she'll check into it. But I know she added it because we compared notes, we even compared notes with Jessica's, and we all had it in there. So, uh, as far as included, you know what I mean, with what was.
So that's just on a different line, and I saw that line, and it had zero on it.
Okay.
But then I have to take those funds and apply them to the people's rates that they applied to, which is five people out of the jail and the sheriff.
Yeah, like you gave us your grand total, and to us, like on our records, we have that grand total on that line. And then you distribute it as needed, you know what I'm saying, or it gets distributed as you tell us who gets it, you know what I mean?
Your payroll, right, y'all.
So Elizabeth and Whitney will check into that for you and see why you're not seeing them now.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay, any public comment?
Jamie's coming.
Oh, Jamie's coming.
Jamie Bain, Health Department Administrator. Been trying to do my job back here on my phone. I don't know if you guys have heard this from other departments or not, but we have an issue where we have, uh, five staff members moving from non-exempt to exempt in two thousand and twenty-five, and I've been trying to find guidance on how to go about paying them out. I know one option given was for them to carry over their comp time that they've previously accrued into next year to use. Uh, another option we've discussed was paying them out, so, um.
This is specific to people that have earned overtime, but won't be earning overtime after January one.
Correct.
And so I asked Jamie to bring this here because, um, I'm gonna have my opinion on it, but, um, I don't think there's really, we don't have a policy that would, 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 and how many people, five? I have five, I only have one that I know would prefer the payout. Versus what, converting it to comp time? It's comp time, we don't earn overtime, you don't, oh, in your department, you don't have overtime. Keeping it straight, it's. Anybody have any thoughts on this? Glad you waited till five hours in, it's good. I would have did at the beginning if I was invited to. Yes.
I, I think there's other offices in the same position.
Yeah, right, are we looking at one?
Yes, you are.
Well, I was just looking at this comp time stuff up, and by FLSA standards, they can carry over two hundred and forty hours is your max comp time you can have. Without, until we are by required by law to pay it out. So just because you're going from not getting comp time, from getting comp time, not getting it, my understanding is they can still have the comp time they've earned, they're just not allowed to get anymore, correct? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
So I mean, they still have that, that's still due to them.
Their bank and it just follows them.
Now, Delaware County Handbook says you can carry over year-to-year eighty hours. That's not our policy, I think that's the Delaware County policy, eighty, eighty hours per year, but at two forty, by Federal Labor Standards Act law, you have to, you have to pay out at two forty, so how many hours?
Well, here's the issue, I wanna pay them out, I wanna start from scratch.
I say you can carry.
There's a lot of factors to take into consideration, their two thousand and twenty-four rate's gonna be cheaper than their two thousand and twenty-five rate. The reason they have comp time buildup is the fact that their jobs require a lot of work out of them. It's hard to take time off, so for me to tell them, pull the comp time over into next year and use it then, there's a reason it didn't get used this year. There's a reason it wasn't used the previous year. If we can pay them out to give them a fresh start, make it more fair that you're an exempt employee now, work smarter, or donate your time basically. Just moving forward, do that, it's, uh, the one employee, it's gonna be seventy-five hours of payout. The other four would add up together to less than seventy-five if they chose payout. We have money available in our two thousand and twenty-four budget, I just don't know the methodology of paying them, and I assume also I would need council's blessing to even do it.
If he does not currently have an overtime line in his budget, then, um, I guess the best suggestion would be to create an overtime line and transfer, um, or appropriate, uh, whichever he's needing. I didn't hear what you were doing, transferring.
We'll be transferring.
Um, transferring then.
It's been due in December.
Correct. Um.
But he doesn't have a line, he doesn't have a line currently, there's no overtime line.
Well, once it's approved at a council meeting, any lines that need created, she goes in and she creates the line and then does the transfer as needed, that's just the normal procedure for that. And, um, I would just like to, um, also ask in this, um, scenario that, um, Emily spoke of the two hundred and forty hours as far as FLSA. And then they can still carry, like, say you have to pay them out for that, what if they have some left over? And can they still carry that even though they've been changed to, um, excluded rather than exempt? And they still carry that and get paid out again then, uh, the following year? I mean, how, how is that gonna be handled if it's more than two hundred and forty hours? This commissioner stuff, like, is this handbook stuff, like?
What, what would be the difference in the scenario you just described?
I'm saying, I'm not, I didn't hear his hours, but say employee has more than two hundred and forty.
Right.
Um, she stated back by the FLSA, you have to pay it out at two forty. If the exempt employee has earned more than two hundred and forty. Um, would you pay them out in full, no matter what that is, so that they don't carry any and are changing, um, classifications?
That's the question.
Would that be the best?
I don't know, it doesn't specify that in it, it says, once they hit two forty, you have to pay them out, now is it over that two forty you pay, or is it a whole two forty, or, cause you can carry over eighty, if, if you get two two forty, so I don't know, I, I cannot get past.
But in my position, if I switch to excluded, then, or, or non-exempt, or, you know, whatever the classification changes to. Then what do you do, if you don't pay out more than two hundred and forty and that employee has more than two hundred and forty?
Still sitting on it.
You're still sitting on it, so can you legally pay it out after you've changed their classification? Can they legally carry it?
Exactly, if you're owed that, yes, of course, yeah. I, I would assume, but I guess maybe I shouldn't assume.
Well, I was told by my state person that once you earn comp time, that's your comp time, no matter if you change classifications, whatever, you've worked that time, that's your comp time. So I've always said, doesn't matter if you go to a different, I mean, obviously, if you leave, you, or you're owed that time. So it doesn't matter if you've changed job descriptions or whatever, you're still in the county. Um, I just can't, I've not found in my research of that two forty, if it's, you know, you have to pay past the two forty? Or you have to pay off of that two forty, now you remember in Casa, we paid somebody out because they had so many? Because they were in the same position as he has his employees, they couldn't, there's no way they're gonna take the time, and we had it in our budget to pay it out. So we did do it because of that reason.
We're dealing with, we are dealing with two different things, I don't know who asked about commissioners, but it is two different things. Whatever the policy, I mean, we are the ones that would pay out the money, are we the ones that also decide?
That's a policy.
Does it pay it out or not pay it out?
And I'll tell you, the courts have a strict policy put in place because we put, we have a lot of, we changed our comp time. we change our comp time policy, and we have it where they have to take it within ninety days, with, you know.
Which absolutely needs to happen here too.
Right, so that, that's the problem, there's no policies in Delaware County really directing or guiding this comp time, so everybody's building it and not taking it, so. That's, yeah, that's a commissioner policy.
And I think a lot of the delay came from the delay in the approval of the classifications, you know? Thought it was gonna be done way earlier, and it just kept getting.
Yeah, but we've just, can't have been kicked out a real while before that, so that's the.
I guess I'm speaking.
It's coming to a head now.
I guess I'm speaking on the July first date, yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah. But, still, uh.
Versus all the speculating, while we have Ben look into any of these questions, make sure we have the correct answers. And then it sounds like to Jamie's point, he just needs to line up the transfer and get all the paperwork submitted and that will take care of it, but what I don't know is, do the employees get to determine if they want paid out or not, or do you get to determine that?
I've asked their opinion so far, I've heard back from three of the five that they were kind of fine either way, in which case, their numbers are low enough, the jobs they do, they will be able to use theirs, the one individual that wants paid out, I would like to see him paid out because job he does, uh, he's gonna be working well over the regular hours on a routine basis, it's gonna be harder for him to take time off.
Appreciate the fact that you've asked them, we got their opinion, but I still, do they get to, I mean, if you wanna pay all five of them out, but two of them say, I don't want that.
Our plan would just be to tell them to use those hours within the first quarter of twenty twenty-five.
You can tell them that, but if, uh, handbook doesn't say it, they don't have to use it. Regardless, you've answered my question with what, what I'm after.
And there's a difference gonna be when you can transfer the money because you've got it, and when you have to appropriate because you don't have it.
Much, absolutely. Hopefully, we've answered your question or helped you.
So the creation of a line, can that all be done during July's meeting then?
No, you do it in December. December.
Or December.
That, that's one. You pay them out, you got the money.
Cause there's only one meeting and it, it advertises transfers only.
It has to be a transfer.
So you'd create the line then as well, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just get with them and, by the deadline.
If it's approved, they'll, they'll, they'll create it.
Okay, gotcha. And I had a second topic.
Okay.
We had a position that was in limbo throughout the job description salary study. Uh, so we have a position that was created and approved that does not have an adopted job description for it. We're hoping to have that, a person moved into that position for January. Any guidance that could be offered on how we feel about getting this job?
And you've asked HR to create a job description, correct?
I've asked HR for guidance and I've not heard back.
So, based on what we've passed here, we'll have a committee that would review any new ones starting in January. You need this done today, right? Preferably, yeah. So I, I had suggested to Jamie that, I think I suggested this to um, that he gets with HR to create the job description as you normally would if it's gonna send you a position, that new position's funded in January, correct? So that he's ready to go, knowing that we're not gonna have that committee in place prior. That sound fair? I would get with Pam or whoever to make sure that gets done and add that to, because those job descriptions need to add the job title, or need to match the job title that was approved, that we've just approved, right, so if there's no description, make sure it gets done.
So that, from HR, it goes to the committee for review and approval.
Not until after January, if you need it now, go.
Go do it.
Get it now. Yeah, because we won't meet until after January.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Yes, thank you. Any comments from the public, what public we had all left us, I think, did we have anyone sign up? Okay. Uh, comments from the council, I think we've shared all kinds of comments today, but I do wanna make sure everyone just knows how personally thankful I am for all of us in the spirit of Thanksgiving. There have been a lot of emotions lately and a lot of feelings or whatever, but at the end of the day, we're a great team, we do work well, we have some opportunities for a little bit better communication, um, that we're gonna work through, but um, I'm thankful for everyone here, and I hope you all have a very happy Thanksgiving. Does anyone else have anything?
We have a date scheduled for that special meeting in January.
January second is usually what it is, if the room's available, sometimes the commissioners meet before us, so I just need a clarification on the time that the room's available. Yes. Yes, December, yes, please, thank you. Okay, yeah. Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll give it to Bill, second.
Second.
Matt, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan? Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel? Mr. Webb?
Yeah, believe it.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Alright, we'll see you all next month, nice and early, December seventeenth. Have a great one.